We call the meeting to order. This is the February 11, 2020, meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the town of Fairfield. The first item on our agenda are Bills and Communications, the meeting minutes from January 28, 2020. I listened to the tape. I was absent last meeting. I listened to the public hearing portion of the tape. There were certain portions of the executive session that I didn't, so I'm going to recuse myself from this and just turn it over to you for minutes.
Mr. De Giacomo was here at the last meeting, right? So he can vote on the minutes in your...
Very good. So Commissioner De Giacomo is sitting for me on the meeting minutes.
Yes. Do I have a motion for accepting the minutes?
No, so moved. Second.
Any discussion? Any comments? I didn't note any problems with the minutes. I guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor are accepting them?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Passes?
Thank you very much. So as noted, with respect to Beacon View for next time, I'm up to speed. Thank you, Commissioner Corcoran. Next item are new applications to recommend a public hearing. Zoning Regulation Amendment, application of Primrose Development LLC to amend Sections 10.18 of the zoning regulations in the designed residence district.
Yeah, I really don't have anything to add to this, Mr. Chairman. It is a proposal to amend the regulations. It does require a public hearing, so this is... So we'll set that down for future days.
Okay. Very good. So required for new commissioners, we have to formally move that, even though it's required, have to have a motion and a second and formally move to a public hearing. So can I have a motion?
Move to public hearing.
All right, so moved by Commissioner Noonan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Francis. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Wen, although he doesn't have much on this one?
Where will the site be?
Where will the site be?
Well, it's not super-site specific, but it's really for development on Upper Park Avenue.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Move to public hearing unanimously. Next item is old business. We have three items. They're related. I will read them together. 3A, zoning regulation amendment, application of the Fairfield Housing Corporation to amend the designed residence district regulations, various sections. Item B, 980 High Street, application of the Fairfield Housing Corporation to establish a designed residence district on land presently zoned Residence B. And item C, 980 High Street, zoning compliance application of the Fairfield Housing Corporation pertaining to a 40-unit affordable housing development pursuant to Section 830G of the Connecticut general statutes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Fairfield Housing Corp. is proposing a 40-unit affordable housing development on this 2.5-acre site. In addition to the site plan application, as you just read, the application also includes a proposal to amend Section 10 of the zoning regulations for dwelling unit density of 17 units per acre to allow eight units per building, to reduce setbacks to 15 feet, to increase lot coverage and floor area, and to reduce parking. The proposal also seeks a zone change to establish a designed residence district. It's important to note, and you have some from prior meetings, you've got some previous case law, it's important to note that under the law, it is not necessary for the applicant to amend the zoning regulations or change the zone in order for a project to be approved for zoning compliance, because compliance with our regulations is not mandatory for an affordable housing application. So that is something that was asked at the last meeting, and it's not required. You certainly can, but you're not required to under the law. The proposal consists of five new buildings with a total of 40 residential apartments. The applicant will deed restrict 70% of the units for below-market rate for 50 years. Of the 40 units, 18 are one-bedroom, 16 are two-bedroom, and six are three-bedroom units. The buildings are three stories with a midpoint roof height of approximately 30 feet. The existing farmhouse on the site is proposed to be converted to an office and community room for tenants, and 50 parking spaces are proposed, or one and a quarter spaces per unit. The chief concerns raised during the hearing were with regard to drainage, environmental impact to traffic, as well as concerns regarding the overall density and impact on the neighborhood for this proposal. And just a reminder, as some of you are well familiar with, the standards for review of an affordable housing application differ from a typical zoning application. For a denial of an affordable housing application to be sustained, the burden is on the commission to prove that based on evidence in the record compiled before the commission, that the decision from which may be appealed is taken, and the reasons cited for such decision are supported by sufficient evidence in the record. And the commission has the burden to prove that, A, the decision is necessary to protect substantial public interest in health, safety, and other matters which you may have legal authority to consider; B, that any identified public interest clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing; and C, such public interest cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the affordable housing development. Court cases have indicated that the record must establish more than a mere possibility of harm to substantial public interest. The record must contain evidence as to a quantifiable probability that a specific harm will result if the application is granted. Mere concerns alone do not amount to sufficient evidence to deny an affordable housing application. I'm quoting from the couple of court cases that provided the commission at the last meeting. There was in addition, there was an environmental intervention filed by neighbors on this application alleging that it a likely possibility of unreasonable pollution to the air, water, or other natural resources. So that's another consideration that you have to consider. Specifically, the intervenors claim the drainage system is flawed and will result in impact on the adjacent wetlands. And the intervenors are relying on two expert reports that were provided in the findings of the inland wetland commission in their decision to deny the application without prejudice. Having said that, though, there's an important distinction that you have to consider, is that the Wetland Agency doesn't have the same burden that this commission has on balancing the potential environmental harm against the need for affordable housing. So that's something that you need to consider. And in the car case that I provided, which was actually cited in the intervenor's brief, on page 13 indicates that the report of a conservation, even though it was a denial, that report of the Conservation Commission is not binding on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And further along in that case, it says that a planning and zoning commission which is subject to the affordable housing provisions is required to balance the harm caused by an affordable housing development against the need for affordable housing. So that's kind of what I said before. The Wetlands Agency doesn't have that balancing test that you guys have to consider. It should be understood that if the commission should vote to approve this proposal, that this development cannot move forward until that wetland issue is resolved. The Wetland Commission denied the application, so there is no approved wetland application here. So if that, that's currently under appeal. So if that inland-wetland rejection is sustained on appeal, an approval of this commission still means that project cannot move forward because it would still need to resolve the wetland issue. And if that, and if doing so results in substantive changes to this application, then it would have to come before you again with a revised application. So we did have a report from the Town's Engineering Department reviewing the drainage plan and the peer review and the expert reports. It's the opinion of the town engineer that they're satisfied with the design of the drainage system. There were some recommendations in the peer review report on page five that the engineering department would recommend that you consider as potential conditions should you vote to approve this plan. Those include providing the catch basins be outfitted with four-foot-deep sumps, hooded outlets, and permanent silt sacks. Number two, the construction of the clay lens to be overseen by a qualified engineer and that the limits be staked in the field by a surveyor. Three, certification by the reviewing professional that the system is installed in conformance with those plans. Providing a berm along the southerly border and including filter fabric in the gravel reservoir detail. There were a couple other comments in the file. There is a requirement that if this should go forward, they would have to revise the affordability plan with some of the details that were outlined by the report from Mark Barnhart. And then there was also a provision in the Traffic Engineers' Report that recommended that the frontage along High Street, along this property, be posted for no parking to help maintain the sightline of the driveway. That is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So we should start with a motion to get the conversation going here.
Mr. Chairman, are we splitting up the regulation amendments with the affordable housing application or doing it all at once?
So, an excellent question. I think that we could take them either way. I think my preference would be that we split them up and that the movement, whoever decides to make the motion and to frame the issue, you know, for us, can decide how to proceed. Do you have a motion in mind?
I do. For 3A, the zoning regulation amendment, I would move to deny.
Okay. So we have a motion to deny 3A zoning regulation amendment by Commissioner Noonan?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Braun. Thanks. So Commissioner Noonan, you want to start us off on that one?
Sure. I, in reviewing my notes and going over the Fair TV, the footage on Fair TV, I don't remember, I did not see too much of an argument for these regulations. I understood the reason is to make it essentially a compliant property, but the impact that it would have in a town-wide was not explained to us. And aside for just the reasons that the, as I said, that they wanted a compliant piece of parcel of property, I saw no other reason as to why we needed to amend our regulations that would affect the entire town. So sitting in what we have is broad discretion in our legislative capacity, without seeing strong reasons to amend the regulations, I would move to deny them. Move to deny the regulations.
Very good. Commissioner Braun, any comments?
I agree with him. I think we shouldn't be taking one property owner's request to change the regulations for his property, and if it's town-wide, we don't know the impact. And it's not necessary, as Mr. Wen said.
Okay. Thank you.
If this was to be approved, it wouldn't matter anyway, so.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else? So I agree. You know, there were many comments by the intervenors and the members of the public that the applicant did not make any arguments in support of the regulation amendment. I don't think that an applicant waives the application by not arguing if there is sufficient evidence in the record, but here for a regulation amendment, we would have to find that the POCD supports, that the time and experience indicates a need for the change, that the proposed regulation amendment won't have an undue impact on property values and so forth. And no effort was made to provide us with evidence or argument to support the required standards by which we would judge an application for a regulation amendment, apart, separate and apart from the 830G application. So I agree with everything that's been said for those reasons. Anyone else? Okay. So the motion is to deny 3A zoning regulation amendment. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
We have one abstention from Commissioner Brahman. Okay? Did you get that?
No.
Okay. So the motion to deny 3A is approved unanimously with one abstention. So we have two items remaining, 3B and C. Do I, can I have a motion on one or both of those?
Well, point of order, I guess we should be making a motion for 3B for denial based on our denial of 3A. So for that, for that reason, I would move to deny 3B.
Okay. So motion to deny 3B, 980 High Street, application to establish a design residence district on land presently zoned Residence B by Commissioner Noonan. Okay? Second by Commissioner Corcoran. Okay? Commissioner Noonan?
As we've denied the 3A, which would have made 3B a compliance, it is now therefore not compliance, so 3B must be denied.
I agree. Commissioner Corcoran?
I agree, sir.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. The motion on the table is to deny. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay. So we have one abstention, Commissioner Brahman. Otherwise, 3B, the application to establish a designed residence district, is denied unanimously. The last item of old business is 3C, the zoning compliance application for a 40-unit affordable housing development under 830G. Do you have a question, Commissioner?
I do not.
Okay. Can I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Levy?
I would move to approve the...
Can you use your microphone, please?
I would move to approve the zoning compliance application of 980 High Street pursuant to 830G.
Okay. So that we don't have to go back and forth on friendly amendments and such? Does your motion include all of the recommended conditions that Mr. Wen reviewed in the staff's summary?
I would include those conditions, assuming that under an 830G, we were able to impose, or if the applicant would concur with a friendly amendment to that effect.
Well...
I think you have the right to...
Yeah.
...put reasonable conditions on any application, but an 8-30G application is not exempt from that, in my view.
I agree. I agree. Particularly when our own engineering department is the one making the recommendations for public health and safety reasons.
With their own peer review, too.
Say again?
I think it came from their own peer review.
Yeah. And their peer review. I mean, it was, these are things that were noted in the record, so if they choose to take an appeal from those kinds of things, then we have bigger issues. So your motion is to approve with all of the conditions for approval recited by staff in the summary?
That is correct.
Okay? Anyone for a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Noonan. So Commissioner Levy, you want to?
Yes. In terms of the 830G proposal, you know, looking out here and listening to the considerable, you know, testimony, both from the experts, from the applicant, from the opposition, the interveners, as well as members of the public, I'm frankly very sensitive to the concerns of the neighborhood. Their concerns about density, and their concerns about traffic, and their concerns about the potential impact on the wetlands, which are in one corner of the property. But today, we have to deal with this under 830G and with the well-recognized need for affordable housing in this town. And it's something that's very important and should be very important to every member of this town, to the extent that we wish to promote diversity and inclusion in our town. I recognize, unfortunately, that, again, that this application is, shall we say, east of North Benson Road, and that is where many of the applications have been presented. But that's, we cannot control where or when these applications will be presented and the economics as presented to various developers throughout the town. We can only deal with this application. And based upon the evidence that I heard, you know, the credible evidence to my mind is based both on the detention system and on the traffic issues, the water detention, that the need for affordable housing far outweighs any potential harm to the public interest, health, safety, or other matters. And those are interests, you know, are concerns that we, either at this stage or on appeal, would have the burden. So in that particular case, I have not heard any credible evidence to rebut the presumption in favor of this 830G application. And nor do I find that the evidence was such that the concerns presented outweighed the need for affordable housing in this town. And based upon that, I believe that this application should be approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Noonan?
Thank you. Commissioner Levy's remarks on the need for affordable housing, the trend of locations of affordable housing are all well-spoken and all well-taken. In reviewing what we had in front of us at this point, I feel compelled that we have not yet, or cannot yet at least meet that standard. I do have serious concerns about parking predominantly, that not enough parking is going to be provided onsite, and that there will likely be an overflow onto High Street. And when you add on the recommendation that staff has provided, and I think the...
The police.
The traffic engineer himself, that the parking would not happen on the frontage of their own property, that means the spillover is going to be on the, adjacent to the neighbor's properties. And all the inconveniences and potential problems that are associated with that will not even be forced upon the applicant and his own property, or its own property, excuse The problem I see is a lack of quantifiable evidence that we could really hang our hat on. The drainage and environmental issues are also, have also been brought up. The problem with those linked concerns is we have not just the applicant's expert and not just the applicant's peer reviews, sounds like two, maybe there's four total on the applicant's side, but our own town engineer has given her approval, and we've relied on Ms. Pooley in numerous occasions. It would be somewhat awkward to find against her in this respect. Having said that, one thing I would be open to if, A, not just open to the rest of my commissioners' opinions and arguments, which may hopefully persuade them, persuade me that there is enough evidence in the record to meet this very high, if not unique, standard. But maybe an extra time can be afforded to staff to have them look through the record and use, ask them to spend the extra time to see if there's other things in the record that they feel may be worth bringing to our attention again as reasons for either denials or approval. I know it's unusual for us to take as much time sometimes as we have in this one, tabling it twice, but I feel maybe that it might be worth the time for staff and for us to reexamine this for another two weeks. But as I sit here, I, if the commission feels that enough time has lapsed and the evidence presented is what it is, as I sit here, I would move to approve. Though, as I said, I would be more than willing, if not my preference would be getting, tabling the issue again and asking staff to review the evidence for us.
Okay. Thanks for that. So, and I know Commissioner Braun, you're waiting patiently. Just give me one moment, just to respond to that briefly. So I think that is very constructive, and I support that, but I just want to articulate something with regard to the wetlands issue to Conservation. So the intervenors who, you know, I think were required to make a finding that they satisfied their burden in order to be appropriate intervenors at some point. We don't, certainly if we table the item tonight, then we can do that when we reconvene again. But the substantial arguments that we got from them were relating to the Conservation approval, right? And they introduced all of that evidence all over again. And as Mr. Wen explained, we have to sit in consideration of that, not just in terms of the way that Conservation Commission sits in judgment of that on the merits of whether, you know, it impacts the wetlands, et cetera, but whether that impact substantially outweighs the need for affordable housing. I think it's rather unique, and I think in our, in our and the town's interest, that the applicant here, after their denial at wetlands, filed their appeal, and while that is on appeal, came here because that is the approval that they need to proceed with this project. And our consideration of the Conservation issues should be wholly with respect to whether it outweighs the need for affordable housing. And I don't think that we can do that. Like, I don't think that those issues outweigh the need for affordable housing. I think we may have other issues. But if Conservation's decision with respect to the evidence on the application at Conservation lives or dies on its merits without respect to 830G, like, that's for the trial court now to decide on appeal of the decision, right? Because they're going to review that denial without regard to 830G. And if that is overturned and it's approved, then who are we in our capacity to then suggest that the issues relating to the wetlands outweigh the need for affordable housing? I just don't think that those square, given our burdens and the statutory restraints that we're under, right? So Commissioner Noonan, I would be supportive, I'm supportive of your suggestion, but don't think that we should be, you know, combing through the record with respect to Conservation issues, because I think that that is sort of a lost, I don't think that carries weight.
No, and I would, that's fair.
Do you follow my logic?
No, I do. I think that might be a fair use of staff's time is to essentially say, if the Superior Court rules in the wetlands commission's favor, then obviously...
It's dead.
It's dead. If it doesn't rule in the wetlands' favor...
And reverses.
Reverses, and they ask to approve, it's, yeah, it strikes me as counterintuitive that we're going to come back and, yeah.
We then are going to, no, 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 no. Actually, on the merits, at Conservation, the trial court has now said it should be approved.
Yeah.
But the problems outweigh the need for affordable housing. Like, that's just, it's incongruous. So I would sugge, but I do think that there are potential issues with the drainage and with the, you know, other issues that staff could look at.
Yes.
Okay? And so with that having been said and those comments, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Braun, if you're ready, if you'd like to...
Is there a motion on the...
There is a motion.
To table?
No, 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 no. There is not a motion. The motion on the tape, the motion on, the present motion is to approve with conditions as stated by staff. It's been seconded, and we're now discussing that motion. Commissioner Noonan has made a suggestion, which I think would include a withdrawal of that motion, in favor of a motion to table the item with instructions to staff to do more work on this.
I, I would support Commissioner Noonan's position because we heard from an engineer that said this is going to turn into a bathtub. To me, that's a health or safety issue. And I would like that to be addressed. I haven't seen it addressed in any of the comments or notes so far. And secondly, there are certain things that were highlighted by the interveners, such as, there's no place to put snow. There's no room. There's, this is absolutely 20 pounds of potatoes on a 10-pound bag, okay? You've got five buildings on this tiny little property with a vernal pool there. Vernal pools, I'm expanding what my argument a little bit, but vernal pools are extremely important. They're just as important as affordable housing, okay? They support life that can't exist other places. And our commission, our Conservation Commission, acting as the Inland-Weyland Agency, they made the determination that there would be substantial adverse impact unless they scaled this back. So I'd like to hear more detail about some of these, the potential for flooding or turning into a bathtub, and not having anywhere to put the snow, and where are the cars going to go? You only have 50 spaces for 68 bedrooms. I don't...
I don't think 68 bedrooms, I think 68 bedrooms are going to be 68 cars. There's no bus stop nearby, as far as I know. So, I would support what Commissioner Noonan requested and ask that we get, do a little more of a deep dive into this. And I am also concerned about the intervention because I believe it has been substantiated, based on what our Conservation Commission said. They denied it saying, there's an adverse impact, scale it back and there maybe won't be an adverse impact.
Commissioner Braun?
All the parties have acknowledged the need for more affordable housing in Fairfield. And I believe, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, that this application comes down to the decision of the Wetlands Commission.
No, forgive me for interrupting, but there are, I think, three issues. There's the conservation issue, there's the drainage and driveway and flooding issue, and then there's parking and traffic. What I've said is that I don't think that we should take up the conservation issue because that is on appeal. And if the trial court says it affirms, well, then the project's dead anyway. And if they reverse and they say that the Conservation Application should have been granted and orders the Conservation Commission to grant, then that's being granted on its merits and therefore it's incongruous that an approved application at Conservation, somehow we then sit in different judgment that the impacts outweigh the need for affordable housing.
I agree. And it does not make sense for this commission to undertake an independent review.
But there are two other issues that I think are ripe with respect to, certain of the issues that Commissioner Noonan and Commissioner Braun outlined. And that's what I support, what I would support us tabling for, to take a deeper dive into those issues and affording us a little bit more time on this very important application, considering we do have the time to do that. We're not under a statutory constraint to decide this tonight.
Understood.
Okay. Sorry for interrupting, but I just wanted to clarify.
If my fellow commissioners want additional time to consider this very important matter, I would not be opposed to that. I would say, with respect to the drainage issue, we do have in the record the email from Laura Pooley, January 31, 2020, that states that the drainage has been resolved to the satisfaction of the town engineer. With respect to traffic and parking, I understand the concerns of the neighbors and I have heard them. I would be open to listening to arguments as to how traffic issues and parking issues rise to the level of outweighing the need for affordable housing. As I sit here, I do not believe that that high burden has been met with respect to the drainage, traffic, and parking. And we are charged with doing what's right for the town within the bounds of the law and the constraints of 8-30G.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Francis?
I see a slight health issue with the lack of sunshine with these tall buildings very wide. Safety concerns me more with the parking lot being central to the whole thing in large and yet not providing enough parking. I'm very concerned about it. No parking signs on the street and I agree with Commissioner Braun, there are not enough parking spaces. The layout and design leaves a lot to be desired and having the parking lot take up the whole space, there's just no lawn, no green space. There are going to be some families here, there's no place for children to play, people to meet. The buildings should probably be 30 feet in instead of 15 and the first floor devoted to parking so that you would have fewer units and no parking in the middle and put all the handicapped in the third building on the left and their parking across the back. It's just not well designed to blend into the neighborhood. And I'm concerned with the impact on an established, well-maintained, middle-class neighborhood in town to put this large development with inadequate parking, large buildings, a large parking lot. It just seems horrifying to me.
Please, that's not appropriate. Please, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Francis, Commissioner Francis. So, any other comments on Commissioner Noonan's suggestion? So, I think then, before we go any further, then Commissioner Noonan, perhaps at request, Commissioner Levy to withdraw in favor of your motion to table?
Commissioner Levy, I make such a request?
Yeah. Having listened to my fellow commissioners, obviously procedurally, in order to proceed to the motion to table, I would need to withdraw the motion to approve because otherwise risk an adverse decision, which may be contrary to the law, in order to get to the issue with tabling. Though I would say that in terms of tabling it, not to beat a dead horse, but, you know, as a hiker and backpacker, I'm very sensitive to the conservation issues. But in connection with an 830G and looking at the law, you know, and the situation of this case, I think any, you know, referral of the matter back to staff with an eye to looking at the evidence, conservation is not an issue that should be addressed. That is before the courts. If the court sustains the Conservation Commission, then this is a dead issue. If the court reverses it, they would have found that there's been an abuse of discretion or a lack of credible evidence to support the Commission, Conservation Commission, which is dedicated to the preservation of our wetlands and, you know, protecting the environment. And that court reversal would preclude any further action, as far as I'm concerned, on that issue. So, that would not be something we should address. If my fellow commissioners would like to address those other issues further and hear further from staff, I withdraw the motion.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Appreciate your comments on that. The motions to approve with conditions have been withdrawn. Do I have a motion from you, Commissioner Noonan?
Yes, I move to table this application, to recite.
Okay. Motion to table by Commissioner Noonan? Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Braun? Thank you. Okay? Any other comments? Okay. So, I'll say that the request here will be to staff to revisit some of the record with an eye towards determining the issues relating to drainage, flooding, parking, and traffic. Okay?
I will do that, but I would also suggest, obviously, this, not collectively, but if anybody in, if you need more time to consider those things, if you've got an issue that you want to raise to me individually without conversation amongst you, please do so.
Right. So, I'll, maybe it's worth noting, so we're still in executive session before we vote on this, on this motion to table, that any one of us is free at any time to liaise with staff or the town attorney to ask a question about the law or the record. We can revisit the paper files and the tape anytime. We can speak one-on-one with each other. We cannot convene in groups of more than three, correct?
Correct.
Okay? So, as a gentle reminder about those issues. So, we're given, we're going to, if we move to, if we approve this motion and table the item, we'll give ourselves another two weeks to consider this item. Okay? Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Francis?
I will say I agree with Commissioner Raymond that we've had the notice from Laura Pooley-
Yeah.
-that the drainage system works.
Yep.
I mean, she, because there was an expert saying it would not work and she reassessed it and said that it will, maybe she demanded more changes, but she is satisfied with it.
I understand.
That was a serious argument, you know, it would turn into a bathtub, it wouldn't. It seems to have been moot.
I understand. So, I think your comments, I think, would have been in favor of supporting the motion to approve as opposed to the motion to table. Presently, the motion did-
No, I think we should table it, parking and safety.
Okay.
There's nothing worth reassessing.
All right.
But I don't think the drainage is.
Okay. Anyone else? All right? So, all in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Substances? All right. Item 3C, 980 High Street, 40-unit affordable housing development under 830G is hereby tabled. We'll take this up again in our executive session in two weeks.
Now, how many maps and traffic studies are we bringing in for this? I have this four-inch binder of three giant maps and they're in the car, but I don't know what to do.
The next item on our agenda is public hearing.
Okay. I don't know.
The first item, well, these are related, I'll read them together. Items 1 and 2, zoning regulation amendment, application of Blackrock Realty LLC to amend Section 21.16 of the zoning regulations. And item number 2, 160 and 219 Ash Creek Boulevard, special permit and coastal site plan application of Blackrock Realty LLC pertaining to the construction of a mixed-use commercial and residential development in the Design Industrial District and the Transportation Commercial Park. Yeah. Why don't we, why don't we do that? Yep. We'll just wait a few minutes and give everybody a chance to settle. There were quite a few people in the audience for the last items.
You brought in three of the last, okay. I didn't, I have three giant maps and a traffic study and they're all in the car, I don't know what to bring.
We bought enough on the same side. We have the opposite one.
Okay. Have we lost Tom? Were we losing people? Commissioner Francis? Meg?
Yes.
Thanks. We'll call the meeting back to order. Attorney Fitzpatrick.
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with a law firm of Fitzpatrick, Fran Bologna. We have offices at 1735 Post Road. I'm here this evening representing Blackrock Realty LLC, the owner of the property at 160 and 219 Ash Creek Boulevard. With me tonight is Mr. Sam Mermelstein, the Vice President of Development of Enclave Equities, based in Purchase, New York, which is a member of Blackrock Realty LLC and the current managing partner of Blackrock Realty. Property which is the subject of this application is located on Ash Creek Boulevard. Property is bounded by the railroad to the north, Blackrock Turnpike to the east, Ash Creek to the south, and Canard Street to the west. The entirety of the property owned by the applicant to the west of Ash Creek Boulevard contains approximately 22 acres. The applicant is requesting approval for a five-building, 357-unit apartment complex as well as a 118-room hotel on the 22-acre parcel to the west of Ash Creek Boulevard. The applicant also owns property to the east of Ash Creek Boulevard, just over an acre and a half, and is also requesting conceptual approval for a concourse building to be located on that parcel, which is anticipated to include 49,950 square feet of office space and 19,430 square feet of retail space. Also proposed for the westerly parcel is the construction of an additional retail building containing 17,000 square feet on the point, which is our terminology for an area, as you will see soon, to the south, directly adjacent to Ash Creek. This matter has been before the Plan and Zoning Commission in the past. The most recently approved plan, as near as I could tell, anticipated the construction of approximately 976,000 square feet with the majority, the vast majority of that being office space. That zoning approval was made pursuant to the terms of Section 2116 of the zoning regulations, the Transportation Commercial Park. That regulation was enacted to address the use of this specific parcel. That regulation was designed to foster and encourage, among other things, the very significant office use anticipated. The demand for that office use never came to fruition, which is the reason the property has sat fallow for a significant number of years. As a result of the lack of interest in speculative office construction, the present application before the commission proposes a significant residential component. As a result, the applications before the P&amp;Z tonight are twofold. First is a regulation amendment modifying the terms of Section 2116, the Transportation Commercial Park regulations, in a number of respects. The most significant change is to include residential use as a special permit, permitted use in the Transportation Commercial Park zone. Second part of the application is a special permit application permitting the specific proposed construction. As the commission is well aware from the volume of documentation submitted, this is a complicated application with a number of moving parts, if you will, and there are a number of experts who have contributed to the preparation of these plans. The experts involved include Pete Romano of Landtech of Westport, involved in the site and civil engineering, the Sullivan Architectural Group from Milford, the project architect, LaRero Engineering Associates, Inc., which handled the environmental as well as site and civil work, Blades &amp; Govin, Landscape Architects of Westport, and Michael Colante of Frederick P. Clark Associates with offices in Fairfield, the project traffic consultant. These are the experts that I will be introducing to you in the course of the presentation. The intent of the presentation is to provide the commission with a detailed description of just what is proposed. At the conclusion of the presentation, the applicant and the experts look forward to the questions and comments of the commission to flesh out any details which require further explanation. First, as the party who prepared the text amendment, I'd like to briefly take the commission through the specifics of the text amendment and the rationale for these changes. I'd like to submit a packet, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Is this just copies of what has previously been submitted?
This is, number one, the text amendment itself highlighted in a very attractive fashion so that you, so that you can see the changes proposed. Number two, an updated zoning grid. And number three, an updated parking chart. On the parking chart, I particularly wanted to add a column which showed the progression of the parking relative to development onsite. Those are the three things in this packet. All three have been submitted, two have been updated. The proposed text amendment amends Section 2116.1, the initial general purpose paragraph, to include a reference to the development of a mix of residential development, providing mixed income and affordable housing options. The, go to page 2. The recitation of the permitted uses in Section 2116.3 was amended to include residential uses for one or more families. You go to page 3. Section 2116.5.3 was amended to include residential density compliance in this section. You go to the fourth page. It also adopts the existing TOD, Section 13.14.6, regulations regarding residential parking, which is the lesser of one space per bedroom or 1 1/4 spaces per household for residential use. The language of the existing Transportation Commercial Park regulation, which states that the total number of spaces required shall be determined by adding up the number of parking spaces required for each use and multiplying such total by 80% was retained. You go to page 5, the conflict, Section, Section 2116.10 of the regulation addresses access, height, block coverage, floor area, and setbacks. A catch-all provision was included in this section stating that the specifics of this regulation shall control in this respect over Section 13, the Commerce Drive Area Design District Overlay. The intent here was to have this zone, which was created for this property, controlled in that it preceded the enactment of the Commerce Drive Design District Overlay and is by its nature site-specific. We go to the next page, the total floor area limitations, 2116.10.5. The last sentence was needed to be included outlining residential, residential density since residential density, I'm sorry, since residential use was not a permitted use in the past. The sentence was included stating that the maximum allowable residential density shall be 50 bedrooms per acre and residential use shall not exceed 70% of the total floor area. Again, these limitations reflect the existing provisions of TOD, Section 13.14.4. I should note that the findings of the TOD study, which the commission, commissioned, suggested consideration of an 80%, 20%, 80% residential, 20% commercial proportion. We go to the sixth page. An important change in the Transportation Commercial Park is the inclusion of Section 2116.13 regarding below-market rent housing. The intent here was to include an affordable housing component. This requires not less than 10% of the units created shall be affordable. Under the specific criteria outlined in the regulation, there are 357 units proposed, which would result in 36 affordable units. That is, in a nutshell, the sum and substance of the proposed text amendment. I think that the test for the granting of the text amendment, that time of experience, changed circumstances, warranted change in the regulations, is satisfied. At this point, I'd like to start with the special permit presentation.
Attorney Fitzpatrick. Thank you. I think we have a question on text amendment.
Right ahead.
Thank you. Commissioner Francis.
I didn't catch what you said on page 4. Retail and professional, did you say they comply with our current?
Let me check, please. On page 4.
Residential, you said, complex with the TOD overlay.
So, what, the, what I utilized for the retail and professional offices was existing Section 13.5.
Okay.
From the Commerce Drive Overlay. And what I utilized for the residential was the existing TOD regs, 13.14.6.
Thank you.
Okay. I had a question about 2116.13, the below-market rate, the affordable housing section.
Yes.
So, the second paragraph there states that the rental restrictions shall be, dot, 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 second line down, middle, administered in accordance with written guidelines as adopted and periodically revised by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Have those, are those guidelines to be created by us and as revised by us, or are those the guidelines in the, the current zoning regulations?
This is, it's in the current zoning regulations. This is the kind of, this is the language, I believe mirrors what we utilized in TOD Trademark 1, and the intent is to comply with 8-30G to the extent of the affordable 40 years, et cetera. So, it's to comply with your existing regs. That was not the intent to suggest it be anything coming.
Okay. So, and I, because I don't recall, and I didn't look, but I don't recall that we have another section that sort of speaks in that style language. This, this was, this is not taken from another section, is it?
I think it is, Mr. Chairman.
This seems more generous than ours. It's even up to 200 years.
I'm just trying to understand if there is a cross-reference here to another section of the regulations, we should make that clear?
Actually, it mirror, the first two paragraphs, to the best of my knowledge, copy.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, the entire thing, to the best of my knowledge, is the same as 13.14.7 from your existing regulations, which is in the TOD district.
The TOD.
It is.
All right. Very good. So, that speaks to the same. So, all right. So, I suppose in executive session, we can perhaps harmonize, or, I don't know, make it clear that we're not talking about something different as opposed to, you know, from something else. But, okay. Yeah, that's, I appreciate that, the cross-reference. Anyone else have any questions on the regulations?
To go to the special permit, as I noted earlier, the applicant is proposing five apartment buildings containing a total of 357 dwelling units and a hotel containing 118 rooms on the lower grade portion of the site directly to the south of the railroad tracks and to the west of Ash Creek Boulevard. As the commission will hear, the site development will be phased with the intention that the certain apartments are occupied as the next building is constructed. The applicant is also requesting conceptual approval for a retail building containing 17,000 square feet and associated parking to the south adjacent to Ash Creek, as well as a concourse building located to the east of Ash Creek Boulevard, containing 19,430 square feet of retail and 49,950 square feet of office with associated parking. This application was reviewed and approved by the Water Pollution Control Authority, WPCA. This application was also reviewed and approved by the Town and Fairfield Conservation Commission. A copy of the Conservation Commission approval was made a part of the application. The application was reviewed at a code enforcement meeting, and all relevant suggestions are implemented. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Mr. Pete Romano, as well as Earl Govan. Peter's with Landtech of Westport, and Earl is with his own firm with offices in Westport as well.
Good evening. I'm Pete Romano, a principal with Landtech out of Westport. We're a site civil and environmental engineering firm. We have a great history with this project ourselves and LaRero Engineering Associates, who you're here from this evening. We're involved in this project back in 2004 when it first started. There's been a lot of starts and stops on different projects. Bill took you through the site. I'm going to be very brief, not going to repeat what Bill said. I'm just going to give you an overview of what's going on there, the different things that Bill spoke of. Now, you can sort of put a face on what Bill spoke about. And then Earl Govans and George Andrews and Mike Colanti and Ray Sullivan, our architect, will take you through the actual specifics of it. They actually are just letting me talk because I made the PowerPoint presentation, so I made them, let me speak tonight. So, some of you, I don't think anybody on the commission, I didn't work on this the first time around. This is the site, the outline, sort of the area of the entire Bullard factory, which was a foundry years and years ago. Unlike many industrial sites in Connecticut, it was a contaminated site. This is what it looks like today. There's the parking for the railroad parking. This is our site over here. And then I'll take you through, this is where the point is going. And then this is the train station all along here. It was the only part of the original approval. I don't think I like that circle. That's a little weird looking. But, so this is what the site kind of looks like right now. And this is what it looked like back historically. This is what was out, this is portions of the old foundry that was on the parcel. It's been demolished. And George Andrews will take you through, and Chris Allen, who happens to be here from our firm, will take you through how we, I'll flip over these. These are all what Bill just went through. Chris Allen, and they can speak to it more. I wasn't going to have Chris speak too much about the wetlands restoration. It was quite an extensive project. George Andrews from LaRero Engineering was involved in the original capping of the site. You'll hear what he talks about. Chris Allen was involved with the restoration, if you've been out there. Our site is about, Bill, I think Bill said, 22, 23 acres, which encompasses all this area here. Along the perimeter, I'm sure some of you have been out there, this is of real extensive wetlands, restored wetlands that basically mitigated the contaminated soils on the site. There's a little walking trail along here. This is the point retail space that Bill spoke about. It's about 17,000 square feet. This is the concourse building that we refer to. It's, you know, still conceptual. It's about 70,000 square feet. It's about 19,000 worth of retail. And in that retail space is eventually going to be the lobby for the train station. Just to orient you, you know, this is Ash Creek. Of course, BJ's is over here. The proposal is, like Bill said, there's, these are five residential buildings. Our hotel's 118 rooms, may even be a rooftop bar there at some point. Little amenities area over here, pool sits right on the Ash Creek, kind of cool looking. Earl's going to take you through all the real, going to take you through the actual designs and stuff, a little bit bigger picture of the whole property. There's 451 residential units in here. Ray's going to speak to it. There's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom studio proper on studio units. We have parking both on-grade here, underneath the hotel and underneath Building 5 there. This is, Bill mentioned, we've been through conservation, we went to the fire department, we got comments from Laura Pooley at engineering. These plans now represent all the different agencies' comments. But, we've done, we've been working on this for a little bit over an hour, well, a little bit over an hour, a little bit over a year. That's why they didn't want me to talk. But I, like I said, I don't need to belabor this. I'd rather see Earl and George get up and really take you through the site, take you through the, the real workings of the site. And then Earl is going to, excuse me, Ray is going to get up and talk to you about the building, and he's got a really neat fly-around presentation that he did, perspective that takes you up and around the entire property. So, Earl, if I, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Pete. Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Earl Govan, a landscape architect with offices in Westport.
Which one are we using? Okay. Again, my name is Earl Govan. I'm a landscape architect with Blades &amp; Govan. We're actually in Fairfield and have been for a while. Just to clarify one thing, Pete mentioned there were 450 units roughly. It's 357 units, it's 450 bedrooms, plus or minus. So, just wanted to clarify that. So, as the master planner for the site, I'm going to give you a little orientation. North is up on the plan, west, south, and east. This is the existing parking lot for the metro center. Our main entrance is located right here at the apex of the turn on Ash Creek with the hotel to the north and Building 5 to the south. This entrance drive has been located to allow for turning movements in all directions. So, the sightlines are sufficient to go north, south, and to come in from both directions. And that is the case also with our secondary entrance. It's been widened to allow, and with a paved island to allow for fire truck access, but it also allows for turning movements in both directions from both coming and going. The upper, or the main entrance, is located at elevation 45, plus or minus. The lower entrance, or the secondary entrance, is located around elevation 25. So, there's a, roughly a 20-foot grade change from the lower entrance to the upper. As you come in the main entrance, we have an esplanade entrance with a ceremonial drop-off and turnaround for Building 5, as well as an entrance into the hotel with a port-cochere and a turnaround and out. This is the upper-level parking for the hotel. There is access underneath to a parking garage for the hotel as well. As you continue down the slope, we head towards the main body of parking for the residential as well as the service access to the hotel. So, they have a dedicated service trash area located adjacent to the metro north. The fire, we have run, turning radiuses for fire access throughout the site, and they are able to make a full route throughout the entire site from either entrances and filter through the site without problem. I am going to see if this, we can get this to go. Okay. In red are indicating the accessible, or the pedestrian route that are available in the site. At this point in time, we are not proposing any additional crosswalks across Ash Creek. What we do have is a perimeter walk system that's totally accessible to both our amenity area as well as to the, the actual platform underneath Ash Creek. There is a stub end of a platform at that area that we are intending to connect to so that one can walk from Building 4 at the far southeast end all the way to the platform, and it's an accessible route.
Yeah. So, will those walking routes be available to the members of the public?
They are not. They are, they are for the, the residents themselves. There is access along Ash Creek and a set of stairs that would be accessible by the, for the public.
That red, that red mark that you've just, sort of, that, right there.
Yes.
Is that a public sidewalk?
That is a public walk. That's correct.
Public walk?
Yes. And this would be open for public access. That is the stairway from Ash Creek down to the platform.
Right. You're proposing to connect that.
That's correct.
To the platform. And I know that doesn't exist today. And so, that connection that you're proposing would also be accessible by members of the public?
It's, it would be, it, it can be utilized, but it's not accessible from Ash Creek Boulevard as there's steps that lead down to it. So, accessible meaning it's not handicap accessible by the public?
No, 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 no. Forgive me.
But it's accessible, yes, it can be accessed.
I didn't, I didn't mean handicapped accessible. I meant available for use by members of the public.
Correct.
Right. So, is there, do you have other map, I didn't see it, and I didn't comb the record for it, but do you have other maps that show the walking paths that are private and not open to members of the public versus those which will be, you know, open to members of the public?
As, as we see it today, the, the walkways on the site, there, there's a perimeter walkway that's located on the outside of the, the property.
Yeah.
That is intended to be secure. The rest of the walkways within are obviously are going to be open for someone to walk through. They won't be prohibited.
Right. I mean, it's a hotel, right?
And to the hotel as well, right.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, anybody can walk into the lobby of a hotel and walk a, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So, I think what would be helpful is if you could provide a diagram of those walking paths, areas, sidewalks, whatever you want to call them, which are intended to be private and restricted to the residents of the residential buildings, and those which are open to members of the public and/or patrons of the
There is access along Ash Creek and a set of stairs that would be accessible by the, for the public.
That red, that red mark that you've just, sort of that, right there?
Yes.
Is that a public sidewalk?
That is a public walk. That's correct.
Public walk?
Yes. And this would be open for public access. That is the stairway from Ash Creek down to the platform.
Right. You're proposing to connect that?
That's correct.
To the platform. And I know that doesn't exist today. And so that connection that you're proposing would also be accessible by members of the public?
It's, it would be, it can be utilized, but it's not accessible from Ash Creek Boulevard as there's steps that lead down to it. So accessible, meaning it's not handicap accessible by the public?
No, 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 no.
But it's accessible, yes, it can be accessed.
I didn't, I didn't mean handicapped accessible. I meant available for use by members of the public.
Correct.
Right. So is there, do you have other map, I didn't see it, and I didn't comb the record for it, but do you have other maps that show the walking paths that are private and not open to members of the public versus those which will be, you know, open to members of the public?
As, as we see it today, the walkways on the site, there, there's a perimeter walkway that's located on the outside of the property.
Yeah.
That is intended to be secure. The rest of the walkways within are obviously are going to be open for someone to walk through. They won't be prohibited.
Right. I mean, it's a hotel, right?
Into the hotel as well, right.
Yeah, right. So I mean, anybody can walk into the lobby of a hotel and walk a, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So I think what would be helpful is if you could provide a diagram of those walking paths, areas, sidewalks, whatever you want to call them, which are intended to be private and restricted to the residents of the residential buildings and those which are open to members of the public and/or patrons of the hotel or the like, utilizing the sidewalks and the connection to the platform and so forth, so that we have that for the record.
Sure.
Thank you.
And obviously, there's some leeway in the middle where somebody parks on the site that's going to visit somebody. They're obviously open to the public, but
Right, I understand.
Not necessarily the entire site. Again, accessible route is the entire site. This is totally accessible from a handicap standpoint. There is also a bridge connection that I think we're responsible for, not necessarily the bridge, but we're providing a hub, a connection platform for the bridge from Fox, I believe it's Fox Street in Bridgeport, to receive that walkway or that bridge. And then, one can then proceed across, as they would today, across Ash Creek. Or continue up and go down the stairs to the platform. There's also the public walkway that will remain, that is open to the public, that is outside the perimeter of our project per se.
Yeah, that's not, that's not on the applicant's property.
Well, it's on the easement. I believe it is part of the property, but it's the easement.
Easement, okay.
Yes.
Did you consider crosswalk across Ash Creek, for example, on the southerly side to come over to the, to the, you know, proposed retail or the parking lot?
There is one here that's existing. That'll be maintained. We did look at opportunities for crossing, and frankly, the sightlines aren't great. The speeds aren't great. And they're, at one time, when this project was approved, I believe that the sheer size of it required a light at that point, where this no longer will, and Mike will talk about that a little bit later. But there is, there's, we're not close to needing a light here. So without a light, we just didn't think it was prudent to be putting a crosswalk somewhere where there was no, there was no stop sign or no light. So we, so we maintain the existing one and have not proposed any others along that route.
So how do people walk from this parcel?
Yeah.
To Commerce Drive?
To Commerce Drive, they would come up to Ash Creek?
Yeah.
And then continue across.
On, on the sidewalk?
On Ash Creek.
On the street?
That's on Ash Creek.
On the sidewalk, on Ash Creek.
On Ash Creek sidewalk, that's right. Or they could come around and go up by BJ's.
Yeah, I mean, that's quite a, I think, a relatively long walk. But so the vision then would be that someone who's living in, say, Building Five or whatever would walk up to Ash Creek on the sidewalk and then walk along the roadway down onto Commerce Drive.
Correct. What I'd like to show you, so that's here.
Yeah.
And then there is, I believe there is a walk on one side of this that continues across.
Right, okay.
And just, you know, there's, there's Whole Foods is up here, so we would intend that that would probably be a pretty, fairly, fairly traveled route.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yeah. So I'm thinking about our transit-oriented district and about the idea that we would build sort of community-based residential areas around train stations. And what I, I'm kind of, it's hard for me to see how this is very well integrated with the train station. I mean, I see that there's a, a building that's connected to the train station there, the, I've forgotten what it's called.
Concourse.
Concourse. But there's very little access to it from the people who actually live there. There seems to be this long perimeter walk, but it doesn't seem to be integrated with the train station. It's just, you have to walk all the way around and then come down to the end of the platform. I mean, that's one thing that occurs to me. The second thing I see is that as a residential area, it seems to be paved. You know, I don't see, if you live there, not only do you have a long walk around the perimeter, and I wonder what happens when you're building these buildings one at a time, what the walking system is while you're building it, and what happens if you don't build the whole thing. It just doesn't, to me, it doesn't, it isn't the spirit of our transit-oriented district vision about how an area around a train station would be integrated with the train station.
Again, you know, the design is predicated on, you know, trying to maximize views, trying to utilize the space that's available, trying to minimize the use of garages, which one would
For cost reasons.
Uncover the inside of the site with, with most, both the cost, and then having to lift the buildings up over the garages so that you're not looking into a garage. So there's a lot of factors that lead into how the buildings are laid out. You know, the idea was to maximize the views out of the property whilst, you know, and obviously, it can't be 100%, but the, you know, and the goal is to pull it, pull residential properties away from the activity a little bit so that there's a little bit of privacy and it's not right on the road. There's also the fact that Ash Creek Boulevard slopes from elevation 20 to 25. It's just, it's a hard, it's hard to get a lot of buildings related directly to that when you have that much grade change going from one end to the other. So Building Five, and I have a sketch to show you. This area here is the area that we feel activates Ash Creek. This is the sloping section, so that's a little more difficult. But up here, we'll show you in a few minutes on how we feel that we've used that corner to activate the pedestrian area, to tie it to the concourse, to create a little different feel and a little bit more of what you're talking about, which is relating more to the concourse and to the, the train station itself.
So just, I mean, I've used this train station a lot. It seems to me that there is a, the original design had a tunnel underneath the road that's not being used. Is that part of your design?
There is a tunnel that we're not using. The tunnel actually connects, the tunnel on our side is 25 feet below grade.
Below grade of the road?
Yeah.
Well, but where is it with?
And it slopes up to the level one below this surface that you see. So the fact of the matter is that that, that entrance to that garage is, is in a hole 24, 20 feet deep from Ash Creek Boulevard. It was very hard for us to understand how that might work.
But, I mean, isn't the point to be able to get underneath the Boulevard so you don't have to climb up and over it?
Originally, I believe it was a, it was a vehicle tunnel.
But I mean, now, if you're...
Well, again, you'd be leading into a, you'd be leading into a lower garage. You'd be going from a garage to a garage, essentially. Because the only way to access the tunnel would be for, through a garage, essentially.
If you make it a garage.
Or you'd have to build a shaft.
Extend it right to the, the, what's the name of that building again?
Five and the concourse.
The concourse.
Again, Building Five's first floor elevation is 45. The garage we have there, we pushed it down because we have some ability to do so, we pushed it down to 26 or 27, so there's a 15-foot headroom. There's still another six feet down to the tunnel before we can get to the tunnel. So it's, it's well below our finished floor and our, our construction. So it's, it was a bit ill-conceived at the time, but what it did was it collected, it connected underground garages, essentially. There were three or four levels of garage on the east side of Ash Creek, and there were two or three levels of garage on the west side, and they were connecting them vehiculately.
But you're designing, you're designing new buildings. I mean, you don't have to treat it that way.
That's correct. What I'm saying is the way these buildings were designed, it became, became difficult to connect to that, to that tunnel because of the elevations that they were built at. Again, we would have to build a shaft down to elevation 20 from 45 to get down.
I won't go on and on about this.
Okay. It was difficult. We tried real hard early on to make that a pedestrian tunnel to do some certain things, but what happens is we also wanted to connect Building Five to Ash Creek. So it was hard to do both because you either have a 20-foot hole at Ash Creek in front of Building Five, or you have Building Five leading out to Ash Creek.
I guess my point is that it's a, it's kind of a brownfield site, and you, you have the opportunity, if you, I think, if you, for the residents there, to walk directly to the platform inside, straight line, beeline, if it's designed that way. I, I think, I don't know, I'm not the designer. But I don't see this here.
Well...
I see this as sort of walking across parking lots and long, long walks to get to the platform.
Again, if you were, if, if for, if, in fact, the tunnel was being utilized, the only ones that would be able to use it from out, without going outside would be those in Building Five.
Well, well, again, that, that's part of the design as well.
It is.
Breaking up the building. And these buildings are, I mean, they're four stories high, right?
They are.
So I mean, we're suggesting this area is suitable for five-story buildings. I mean, you could have fewer buildings that are higher and have more green space.
And, well, again, that's something you could certainly talk to the architect.
Okay.
You know, but again, this is a efficient apartment building, 70 feet wide, double-loaded corridor. You know, it's a standard performer for the size and kind of shape of those buildings, and that's kind of what's being used. But I'm not the expert in architecture, so I'd like to, I'll pass that off to them.
You've said it twice, garages. Where, where are the parking garages?
There is a parking garage under Building Five. There is a parking garage under the parking of the hotel. And there is a parking garage underneath the concourse building, which is actually one story above the grade level parking which is there now. So if you can picture it, what's there now is the ground floor. There would be a level of garage and then another level of what you see here.
Of garage?
One garage in the middle. And then you'll see parking, that's what this is, is surface-level parking at the concourse. Okay, so that's the top level. There'd be one new level underneath that, and then underneath that is the existing parking that's there.
So there would be the existing parking and then two levels above it?
Correct. And the second level being the surface.
And that's on the concourse side?
That's the concourse.
And you mentioned the hotel would have a ground level and then a, a level above it for parking?
Yes, the hotel, maybe you can see it, okay. The hotel comes in at elevation 45, and then you slope down and you come in underneath to elevation 35 underneath the building.
Okay.
And that's the additional parking for the hotel.
Building Five has parking underneath it?
Building parking has five underneath accessible here and here.
And the other parking that I see to the, immediately to the right of Building One and Two is grade level?
It's all on grade, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before I move on?
I have a couple of overview kind of questions.
You gotta use the microphone.
Just, can you, the, the last time this was approved was like 10 or 12 years ago, right? Where were those buildings situated in comparison to these buildings?
I was not part of that application, but if, if memory serves me correctly, there were four or five levels of garage, and the buildings were more, were, I might have to bring in the owner.
I thought they were closer to like the train station.
Closer to Ash Creek Boulevard, I believe. But they were glass office structures suspended above parking. So this is a different animal.
Is there a reason, is there a reason why you can't consolidate, now that it's, you're trying to do mostly residential, that that couldn't be more consolidated, closer there, and leave more like open space?
Again, this is, you know, with, with the parking that's required, the, the building style, you know, an office building is, is a much different animal, and I may be going to ask, defer to the architect to talk about how that gets constructed. They're a different grid system. An office building can be two, you know, 200 by 200 square. It doesn't work real well for a residential building because of the dynamic of a size of an apartment and access and issues. So the building shapes change. It's not really the same, it's not apples-to-apples
Okay.
Comparison.
And the, the property boundary, it's not where the road is, it goes over to where that concourse is. Is that kind of like the boundary is straight line down there?
Yes.
And the rest is owned by the state or the town or public?
Yes, public, it's, that's public.
Was that conveyed over? Because that used to be all privately owned.
Conveyed over?
And the state's running the parking lot and they were going to keep all the revenue? I remember that from like 12 years ago. That's a bummer. Is anyone going to put a restroom into the train station, or is that not part of this, I guess?
I believe that's all part of the concourse building.
That's too bad, too.
Right. Which, which is, again, conceptual at this point.
The, oh, the concourse, but the train station itself won't have restrooms, but the concourse will be affiliated?
The concourse building will, once, once that's, once that is constructed.
And then part, so you have 22 acres that's on the divided property now. That includes, I don't know, nine or 10 acres of the wetland slash public open space area?
Correct.
That has trails in it?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So the concourse is not part of this application, correct?
It is in its entirety, and maybe Bill would be better to speak on how that gets woven into this.
Thanks.
Essentially, Mr. Chairman, it's already been approved in the past
Right.
In a number of different configurations. For the numbers to work, we wanted to show you all the acreage, all the proposed construction. We have not given you site-specific plans for the retail to the south or for the concourse with the full expectation that we would come back for a special permit approval for the specific building on that site. We're looking for a conceptual building for an office retail use there and a retail use to the south.
Right, okay. So, so those are the proposed future footprints of those buildings in a, in a sort of conceptual fashion?
Yes.
I'm looking at the phasing of the project, a couple of pages in Land Tech, Phase One and 1A, 2, 3, 4, 5. What is your expectation of the time horizon for the construction of all five phases? Or, and maybe, maybe there's another section of your presentation which speaks to, to that, and I'm...
Why don't I let Earl take you through the phasing, which I think will address certain of your questions, and then I'll try to address the rest.
Okay. And then, just, before I let you go, to be, to be clear, once the first five phases are finished, it's your expectation then that you would come back with the concourse and the future retail building on the south?
Mr. Chairman, if my client had a tenant for the concourse building tomorrow, we'd be in front of you as soon as we could put a plan together to build the concourse building immediately.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I believe the same with the point. If he had, if he had a tenant, we would be, we'd be including that.
All right.
And we're going to go through, I'm going to come back up with George, our civil who, who handling the phasing from a civil engineering standpoint. We actually going to, we'll give you a little presentation on the phasing and how we feel that's going to, that's going to happen, and that's going to be kind of at the end of this presentation. I'm just going to take you through a few more items. Bicycle storage, we locate it in each of the buildings. We will have bike racks at all the plazas, including the amenity area in the middle between Buildings Two and Three. Ash Creek streetscape, again, we discussed on trying to enliven that and activate it. So we've created a streetscape element of street trees, fencing, piers, and we have two small plazas, or two plazas, one at Building Five and one at the hotel, that are pedestrian plazas that back away from the street and, and provide a little bit of, again, some, some pedestrian scale activity at the street.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just to give you another kind of a view of that, that's the idea with some built-in benches. We have sight lighting, pedestrian scale lighting, special paving, some, again, the fencing and the piers that will continue down and the street trees, and that is intended to follow both sides of the street so there is a continuity of design as we move up the street and both up on the concourse side and on ours. You can kind of see the idea here at the esplanade on how we're handling that.
Yeah. So that, that looks very nice. Can you go back to the slide, please?
Yeah. Which one?
Back one.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, no, no.
This, oh, sorry.
That one, right, right there, right there. So, you know, that looks, it looks very nice. It's further to Commissioner Corcoran's query. It would seem, particularly from this perspective, that someone in the hotel or in Building Five or even in Building Three or Four down to the south would want to simply walk across the street to the future concourse, which is connected to the platform where they could, you know, on their way to the train station, as opposed to having to walk all the way around down to the platform to make the connection, to go under Ash Creek, to walk, I mean, it just, it, it just doesn't complete the picture, right? I mean, now go to the next slide. What I want to do from here is walk across the street
Right.
Into the station. All right? So maybe I'll ask Mr. Galante why we don't see a crosswalk and some pedestrian flow and, you know, but...
Yes. And I think that probably has more to do with it than anything else, is the safety of the pedestrian and how, and how you, how do you ensure that?
So if you go, if you go to the slide that shows the retail building and the, right there. So again, that was a really nice sort of pedestrian view of what's going on, but then if I'm a pedestrian and I want to walk to Black Rock or walk down to this retail store, when I get to the retail store, I'm confronted with a parking lot. And, I mean, this, if this is really, we're gonna have this many people living there who are going to be walking to neighborhood amenities, that's, I would think that a retail store should be up on the street where it's, where it's.
And put the parking behind?
It's part of what you walk to.
Again.
We have, we have too many places in town with parking lots in front of stores.
I don't disagree. There are a couple of issues with this site. One is we have to stay within the boundaries of the easement that's provided, which is the dark green. We can't go beyond that because that's the conservation easement. But that, but again, conceptually, I think we're asking for size and parking numbers, not necessarily design. If that's something that's important, we can certainly come back when this, when this plan is developed for that site to do just that. If that's, if that's important to this commission, I'm sure we could come up with a design that would work with that. Again, it's a little more difficult. This is a more efficient design because of the layout of the property and, you know, where the available land is. But we could certainly come up with alternatives to that design for sure.
Thank you.
Are you amenable to some modifications to the pedestrian flow on the site, even if the buildings were to remain the same? And by that, I mean, if I'm a resident of Building Four and I wanna get to Building Five, I need to cross a drive and parking spaces, there's no pedestrian crosswalk, there's no pedestrian walkway.
Hold on.
That connects those. I've gotta get down to the middle there.
There's lots of problems like that.
Okay.
We are, we're certainly open, yes, we're certainly open to providing traffic calming devices, raised crosswalks to allow for a easier pedestrian transition from one building to the other or across the site for sure. We are trying to green up the site as much as possible, so where we have opportunities, we're greening the site, not necessarily providing walkways in every direction. So that's, you know, we're trying to balance both that and the pedestrian movements.
Thank you.
Streetscape, we talked about. So site layout, again, buildings are located on the perimeter, taking advantage of the views, getting some privacy, getting, you know, close to that, that wetland or that conservation area. Each of the buildings are centered, and I'm gonna go back here, sorry. Each of the buildings are centered around plazas that are sustainable design plazas. So they, they all have, they're, they're basically, both entrances to Buildings Three and Four are located right here. The central portion of that plaza is a rain garden, sustainable design, it's permeable pavements, low pedestrian lighting and landscaping, so that the entrance to each of the building is there and then the other entrance is here. Our amenity area is located here with an interior amenity space in Building Three. The amenity area, again, accessible, as are the entrances at both Buildings Three and Four, as well as One and Two, all accessible. The amenity area has spaces large enough for the entire residential community, centrally located, has outdoor meeting areas and gathering spaces, swimming pool and sun deck, outdoor grill stations, dining areas, entertainment areas, a pavilion and passive recreation, all within that small area here. And again, there's ancillary support spaces for those inside of the building, both in Buildings Two and Building Three. Again, pedestrian lighting, bike racks located at all three plazas, the entrances, as well as the amenity area. There is a lower entrance to Building Five that's located about elevation thirty-five, or elevation thirty. There's an upper entrance up here at the, off of Ash Creek, which is at forty-five. Refuge enclosures located both here, north and south. Those are, there will be compacters in each of the buildings and staff will be bringing refuse out to those for pickup. There is a small service building that would house a maintenance facility, maintenance vehicles, et cetera, so that they don't have to be located underneath any of the residences. Landscape and lighting, the project has over two hundred trees, a thousand shrubs, four thousand perennials and grasses. The plan has been reviewed by the tree warden and doesn't have any suggestions or any issues at this point. This is a plan that shows you the parking garages. That's Buildings One, Two, Three and Four. This is Five. This is the garage for the hotel and this is the garage underneath the concourse building. And the above section kind of gives you an idea. The buildings down at the water are down a little lower. Building Five is up a little higher with the parking garage underneath. This is Ash Creek. This is the concourse building.
Does that show the tunnel?
The tunnel is right there.
And that's the road?
That's, up here is the road.
So.
See, that, is that dark area? That represents the road right there.
And, and are those levels of the parking garage?
Those are, are levels of residences above.
Right, okay.
That's a garage underneath.
Yeah, okay. We're not looking at garage above grade.
No, 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 you're looking at sections of the building. This is what I was trying to describe. This is the, this is the surface level of the concourse. These are the two garage levels below it, this being the existing, that being a new level that's in between the two.
And so to Commissioner Corcoran's point, and I understand your, you know, the physical issues about the tunnel, but to Commissioner Corcoran's point, the tunnel on the right-hand side of the screen, which I think is the east, right, does connect at the grade level of that first level of garage?
It does.
But on the other side, it's twenty feet difference?
It's, it's twenty feet below the finished floor of Building Five, which is elevation forty-five. It's roughly at elevation twenty.
Yeah.
We're at elevation, and you can see we have a much bigger headroom here, but we're at elevation twenty-six and we have fifteen-foot floor-to-floor in the garage. It's like we can't go any lower to make that work. I mean, another, you know, twenty feet of headroom just seems a bit absurd. But again, we tried to go down as far as possible and still couldn't really get down to that level of twenty, which is, it's at an odd elevation.
Wow, okay.
Is the finished floor a bit sloped?
There, we could do, I'm sure we could do some things that if, you know, if we had to, again, where it's located, it's, it's not ideal in any stretch of the imagination where, where the tunnel is located, the elevation it's located, in proximity to what we're proposing.
Yeah, Commissioner Earl.
I have a question. You might not be the right person to ask, but I, a big chunk of this whole property was covered with a, was, still contained some contaminated fill which was covered with a plastic membrane. So, somebody else will answer that?
Yeah, we actually have a plan that shows what's capped now and what's gonna be capped. So we can get into that.
One other overview question. Which is, there's two lots involved, One Sixty and Two Nineteen. Is one of those the retail building or the concourse building?
One Sixty is the concourse, Two Nineteen is the entirety of the.
Including the retail, thank you. Okay, thanks.
So I just wanted to show this plan. This is a pictorial view of the lighting plan. We have two types, styles, two types of lights. We have a pedestrian height, eleven-foot decorative fixture that's located on the perimeter of the site. On the entire walking surface has sharp cutoffs so as not to shine into the windows. It's actually located, our entire perimeter is, utilizes those, or pedestrian areas, I should say, utilize those, those lower fixtures. And then we have a taller twenty-two-foot high fixture in the middle of the parking lots, just to give us the best coverage. This parking lot, remember, is twenty to twenty-five feet below Ash Creek. So in terms of its elevation height. So these lights are tucked down into the slope of the, of the parking area. And so, you know, the, the height of those, again, is designed to minimize the amount of fixtures and to keep that sharp cutoff in that area. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Bill again, because I think he's gonna introduce Ray. And we'll be back to talk about some phasing a little later, unless somebody has some questions before I step away.
Anyone have any other questions? Commissioner Francis?
How much fill will be going in to the site?
We've estimated approximately seventy thousand cubic yards and it's simply to fill the hole that's there now. And, and I'll give you a little bit of reasoning for that, is the existing system was set up, the existing storm system was set up with an elevation, I'm not quite sure what it is, but maybe George can talk about it a little later. But it's kind of set our whole design. In order for us to drain the site, we have to be above that pipe. And so it's kind of set everything above a little higher than we wished, but we're, we're meeting up with the original design location of the outflow pipe, which is kind of setting the elevations of the entire site. But there, we are filling that hole up with, with material.
And there's a mitigation area and conservation area. What was, what are the three different areas did I gather in the estuary?
I'm not familiar with the areas of.
You're not the right person for this.
In terms of, what's, what is the question?
There were, it sounded like there were different retention areas and estuary areas.
There, there are, those were already built into the conservation easement. So they're located here on the plan. There's, there's two basins that are located here and here. And those are, again, part of the reason that we're having a little difficulty with the height, or the, the level of the grade, is because we're trying to meet and match some of those grades that were developed previously, when there were five stories of parking. So that, part of the reason that was done originally was because there were so many levels of parking, they, they didn't have the issue of going down so low.
Oh, right. When it was an office building, yeah.
Excuse me, so you have to fill this whole area where these buildings are in, so it's higher up, closer to where the road is?
It, it's actually, right now, it's so low, it's down at elevation seven and eight. So it's thirty-five feet below the road right now. We're gonna raise it up so it's at elevation roughly twenty. So what it does is it meets the grade of the existing, there's a stone wall out there now?
Yeah.
We're gonna meet that grade so that the first floor of our residences is actually sitting up above that looking out, so that we raise that up to elevation twenty, twenty-five, depending on which building they step a little bit. But again, the hole in the ground, which is really here.
Okay.
Is down at elevation seven and eight. So we really just have to bring that up to a manageable level so it's not so far down into the, into the ground and so we can drain it.
The grade will end up being similar to the grade of like open space area?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ray Sullivan, Principal in the Sullivan Architectural Group with offices in Milford.
For the record, my name is Ray Sullivan of the Sullivan Architectural Group. We're located at One Fifty-Five Broad Street in Milford. We just moved there a year ago. Previously, for the last eight years, we were on Lantern Hill, kind of across from Alto downtown. So we have a series of slides. You know, this, this, this one aerial, I'd like to kind of just touch upon the buildings, run through some math numbers. I then have a video, which I don't think I have the ability to stop here, but I have a series of stills, you know, taken from that video where we can talk about some of the specifics. So if we look to the left here, that's Buildings One and Two. Buildings One and Two, they're four stories. The footprints are approximately thirteen thousand two hundred square feet. And between the two of them, they house a hundred and fourteen units. Buildings Three and Four, they're a little bit larger. Their footprint is sixteen thousand seven hundred fifty square feet and together they house a hundred and thirty-four units. Building Five is this L-shaped building here. You know, that's the largest of the buildings. That's footprint is twenty-four thousand seven hundred fifty square feet and it houses a hundred and nine units. So, so by summary, we have three hundred and fifty-four units. I thought somebody might have mentioned it was four hundred and fifty-one. We have four hundred and fifty-one bedrooms. We've got three hundred and fifty-seven units. Of the three hundred and fifty-seven units, fifty-five point five percent of them are one bedrooms, twenty-six point five percent are two bedrooms, eighteen percent are studios. The building up here, up above, which, which we'll see, is the hotel that has the hundred and eighteen rooms. We're not designing the hotels. We put a illustration of the hotel in the model so it makes sense instead of it being a big black or white box.
Do, do you have a hotelier that's taken up the project yet or not?
I, I believe there are lease negotiations going on, but, but one is not signed at this point. There were, there were actually several.
Several, several horses in the race.
Yes.
Good.
So if I could, I'm just gonna go to this, this video, which only lasts about a minute and fifteen seconds. And I can't stop it here, but we'll, we'll just, just run through it and then, then again, I've got some stills. There's the plaza in front of Building Five. So we're entering the site, passing the hotel and dropping down into the lower elevation, which Earl has mentioned is fifteen to twenty feet below. There's a, there's a second level underneath that parking area for the second level of the garage. Buildings One and Two, As Three and Four have common plazas and the, and the entries are opposite one another. There are the rain gardens that Earl alluded to. So good, outdoor amenity. Building number Five is four stories of residential because the grade drops off, there's parking below, you know, in this light, it's hard to see, but there's a lower level entryway, which the lobby's actually at the garage level. So by way of stills, you know, as, as Earl discussed, the intent on Building Number Five was to cut away the edge, you know, to open up the corner, to create a plaza, to engage the building, you know, you know, on the street, to open up the views, you know, into the project and to create some interesting architectural elements that might be, you know, signature to the, the project in total. As we go down, enter the site, that's Building Number One on the right, Building Number Two on the left. So the, the lobby entrance right here is to Number One, the lobby entrance to Two is, is right there. So they face one another, they share this outdoor plaza, they share this landscaped area, rain garden. And so there's a lot of activity kind of, you know, right at this intersection. And the same thing happens at Three and Four. They both share, you know, common entry areas. I mentioned before, that's Building Five, so there's, there's four residential floors because the grade drops off and as Earl mentioned, you know, there's parking below this one. You know, there's a parking level below that, that, the actual lower level entryway lobby is, is right here, which is actually at the garage level. Here's the amenity area, which is between Build, the end of Building Two and the end of Building Three. So, you know, you know, Earl's designed a great exterior space, you know, we've got a pool, we've got green area, we've got deck area, I mean, hardscape plaza and elevated deck. You know, there's, there's areas of recreation, you know, it's, you know, it's a, it's a substantial, substantially sized area. The main amenity area, you know, for the complex is actually on the lower level of Building Three, which is right here, so that the exterior amenity is framed by this interior amenity in Building Three and there's some smaller amenity area here in Building Number Two, so that you've got the exterior amenity, you know, bookended on both sides with interior amenity space. So this is Building Number Three. So I was just alluding to that this.
Before you get to, I'm sorry, before you get to the floor plans, Commissioner Corcoran?
Sure.
It was mentioned earlier that those walkways would be secured. How would, and what, they don't look like they're secured here on the left side.
The fence along it? You know, Earl's telling me there's a fence along it. I guess I didn't put it in.
The cement mound thing is not a walkway. The walkway comes across there and it's just.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. See the people on the walkway?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's no security, but there's gonna be a fence.
There's, there's, there'll be a fence on the, on the property behind the, on the wall.
All right, thank you.
This is the ground floor plan of Building Number Three. So the amenity, outdoor amenity area is right here. So there's a fitness center, there's a, you know, kind of a, a club room, a little bit more quieter. It's hard to see in this light, but there's a fireplace here, large seating grouping. There is an open kind of, you know, game recreation area in here. Across from the fitness center, there's a yoga room, there's bathrooms for those people who wanna work out. And there is the leasing office, which is here. You know, across the plaza in Building Number Two. You know, across the plaza in Building number 2, we have, I'm not sure the correct term is "we work," but, you know, a lot of the people like to get out of, you know, their apartments. A lot of times, they're working from home, they just want to get out of their office for a little bit. They're working at a laptop, you know, there. So, you know, we've got workstations in the other building, as well as multipurpose room, which is often used as either a theater or a music room, because both rooms are sound-protected. And we find that the music room is, you know, is quite popular today. So this is typical of a lobby. So if this is Building number 3, directly across would be the lobby of Building number 4. So as you enter that lobby, you know, we've got some mechanical spaces, you know, we've got mail package storage, you know, we've got a stairwell, we've got the elevator. Earl had alluded to, this is bike storage. So we want to make sure that, you know, every building has bike storage, and it's accessible from both the inside and the outside. So if I go, if you go to the lower image, that's a typical floor plan of all the buildings. Because the, because the building entryways are on one side, there's an elevator and a stair lobby area on one side of the building, and then a stair tower on the second side.
I have a question.
Yes.
So it just seems like this is an obvious place to have at least some retail, like to buy a newspaper or a sandwich. There's nothing here to accommodate that?
Well, in the lower level amenity areas, and particularly by the gym, you know, most of the users, you know, have, you know, these all have coffee stations, kitchens, you know, a lot of times, some of the users are putting out, you know, Danish pastries, you know, for all the commuters in the morning.
Right. I think that, Commissioner Corcoran, if I put words in your mouth, in the nature of mixed-use retail for those who might not live here, right? But to integrate this into the community, into the metro station, Ash Creek, you know, environment.
Well, I think if the building, if the buildings were on the road, that would be an ideal situation. But I think that any kind of retailer needs signage, needs identity, and they're so deep into the site and down into the site that they'd rely only on the people who lived here. And I think on a retail basis, it becomes very difficult. I understand the concern, but if, so if we're out on the road, ideal. I mean, the hotel's out on the road, you know, the hotel has its lobby, it's got its fitness center with a plaza up front, it's, you know, it's got its lounge area, bar with an-
Right. Building 5 is on the road?
Building 5, you know, is on the road, yes. So-
So are aspects of Building 5 that extend along the entrance drive? And the choice of putting the buildings on the edges like that create the circumstance that they're deep in the property and therefore aren't amenable to foot traffic and so forth.
So, you know, we'd be happy to study that out and review it with the owners to further gauge the street and provide some mixed-use activity there.
Yeah. I mean, and I understand the challenge, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
It's like, there is, there needs to be a "there, there" in order for people to want to be there, and it needs to be enticing for those to come and live there in order to create a "there, there." So I, I'm sensitive to that. I'm also sensitive, however, to creating a project that will set the tone for a generation, right?
Agree.
And, you know, yeah, so, did I?
Yeah. This, you know, so I've designed thousands of units, and what's unique about this site is that when you get transit-oriented development, usually you're in some downtown somewhere, and, you know, there's a street, there's a parking lot barely, and people are walking by. You know, you're right, it's an urban environment, you're right on the street, and that makes perfect sense. The, what's happening here, what's happening uniquely here is that, you know, 40% of the units here are looking out over Ash Creek and then can walk to the train station. It's like the best of both worlds. So I think the idea of, kind of, that urban downtown walkability makes a certain amount of sense, but this one's really quite unique in terms of the, you know, kind of conservation land and the views that it's able to take advantage of. So there's probably a give and take in that.
And that's a fair point, counterpoint?
Yeah.
You know? It's true. All of these buildings on 1, 2, 3, 4, they all have balconies that overlook the marshland and the creek and everything, so, point taken.
And every building, every building will have a rooftop garden as well. And those rooftop gardens, you know, will be accessible, you know, to the handicap. And so, you know, just to review, you know, we've got the 357 units. Every unit will be handicapped adaptable. And, you know, 90% of those will be what the state calls a type B unit. 10% of those will be a type, what we call a type A unit. And they talk to the level of, you know, adaptability, you know, provided within the unit.
Commissioner Francis.
Can you tell me the size of the units? The one bedroom, the two bedroom, the three bedroom, their range, their studio, I mean?
Well, the, I don't have my full plan set in front of me. The studios are anywhere from 550 to 610 square feet. You know, the one bedrooms tend to be right around 750 square feet, and the two bedrooms are closer to, you know, 1,050 to 1,100. The, that does not include their exterior deck area. So every single unit has its own exterior deck.
What's a studio? A kitchen with a big room?
It's a, it's, yeah, so it's a, you know, there'll be an entry, there'll be a bathroom, that stuff is all kind of visually protected. And then, and then there is a, then, you know, so then there's a kitchen in an open area. And when we design a kitchen, we like to maybe create like an alcove, so that there's an area to kind of tuck the bed away, you know. It could be a Murphy bed, could be a regular bed, could be a pull-out couch, but we want to give them, you know, we want to give them a living area, so it's laid out so that you can have living room furniture, less than a larger unit, and a TV on the wall, you know, a dining area, cooking area, and some kind of, you know, alcove, you know, for the, you know, for the bed. We often find that those units go pretty quick.
Yeah.
And because a lot of it's based on price point, based on square footage.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes, for the bike storage, how many bikes will be stored in each of those units?
I apologize, I haven't laid those out exactly. I can forward that information to you, but we do have one in every building, and I believe Earl's going to provide some outdoor bike storage as well. So I think it's going to be pretty significant.
On the subject of bikes, are the pedestrian pathways suitable to be shared between pedestrians and cyclists? Are there particular places in the property that would be suitable for bike paths?
Yeah. So Earl's saying they're six feet wide and would accommodate both.
Thank you.
Just to finish up, I'm glad to hear that the apartments are that large. I was wondering if you were going to say very small numbers, 450, 500?
These aren't micro-units, they are.
I'm very glad to hear this is a good size, it's a very attractive project.
They're micro-units, we'd have 800 of them. Just kidding.
Thank you. Please, please, question?
So this is, this is a building section. It's, so the, you know, the buildings are four-story tall, it's a slab-on-grade, they're wood-framed buildings, they're approximately 46 feet tall. What we do, the mechanical systems inside the units are a very high-efficiency VRF heat pump system, so it's an electric-based system. If you've ever used those, Mitsubishi, you know, LG, you know, a number of manufacturers make them now, they've been using them in Europe for 30 years. So their condensers are much smaller, they're kind of like the size of a suitcase. So, you know, that's a condenser size up there, you know, for a typical one-bedroom or studio, it's a little bit taller for a two-bedroom.
So are all the, there's a single, there's a separate unit for each apartment on the roof?
Yes, yes, there are. And so that the, you know, the most typical unit, the, you know, the majority of the units are, when you add the ones of the studios together, you know, that's the unit, and it's barely above the parapet. You know, the two-bedroom units, which we would put on the backside, you know, are a little bit taller. But there aren't any of the, kind of, the traditional central systems, you know, 10-foot tall, you know, big air intake and exhaust sections. They're really all small residential mechanical systems, and, you know, relative to utilities, the utilities are self-sufficient in every single unit, you know.
There are some condominiums not too far away, they're maybe at a higher elevation. Will they be looking at these?
Well, these units are pretty small, so, I mean, you know, could they see them from that, you know, that new project? I mean, it's pretty far away, but, you know, because they're not very big, you know, we don't see the need for screening, but we would certainly entertain screening them if that was the commission's preference.
Okay.
Certainly. What's next? That just happens to be a view from Ash Creek at a lower elevation, little license, architectural license in the high tide.
I have another question. Will the residents have any access to the water?
I-
There's a public walk, it takes them down.
Can they use a kayak?
There is, is there a kayak?
I'm sorry, we need to. I appreciate the inter, but if we're going to come up, then please come up and use the microphone.
Sorry, Earl.
I just, as you all probably heard, was absent at the last meeting, so I had to actually watch the video from last time, and I can tell you that my comments every single time are really well-taken. It is so difficult to follow what is going on if you're at home watching this, or you're watching the video, and people don't sort of use them, and whatever. So I thank you very much.
Earl Goven. Earl Goven. There is access to the public walk, which is in the easement. There are boardwalks that lead out to the wetlands. I don't believe there's a kayak launch. You could walk, you could walk down and launch one.
There's nothing to stop you from launching.
But there's nothing to stop you, and, you know, that's what it's designed for. That was part of the project that was dedicated for public access and will be maintained.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a follow-up on the public portion?
How do you park and get to the public portion? Is there parking for that? Not on this commercial development? I mean, the, you know, is it somewhere else?
There actually is. There's two spaces that are existing that we're maintaining. So as you drive in the lower entrance to our project, just to the left, once you get in, are two parking spaces for the public.
That's it?
That's what we've dedicated, that's what was asked for originally, and they've been there for, since it was conceived.
How, if more than two people want to walk or launch a kayak, where do they come from to go there? They can't park in the train station lot? They can't park in the, you know, the residential development lot? Where would they park and get there?
Right now, the town has asked for two spots. That's what we've, that's what we've offered, I believe.
Okay.
So the architectural intent of the designs of the exterior buildings, the, you know, Fairfield has a great history, you know, and so what we wanted to do was we wanted to use elements, you know, that are consistent, you know, with the historic nature of Fairfield, but use them in a more contemporary manner. We didn't want to duplicate historic structures, you know, but, you know, I think we can be sensitive to the materials used in the past. So that brick-like material is a fiber cement, you know, brick, but that's why we chose that look. The elevations are broken up with these bays. You know, the bays have these flat panels, you know, so they're, you know, they're smooth, they're put together with a metal recessed system so that, you know, they've got depth and their shadow lines. You know, if you envisioned a raised panel on a bay on a traditional home, you know, we're trying to do the same thing, but make that look contemporary. You know, we're using double-hung windows, you know, these, you know, you'll see the outline frames, you know, are shown in white. We really want to use a darker color, like the mutton bars that are shown in there, which are kind of, you know, typical of, you know, some of the old factory buildings. You know, we are using, you know, kind of heavy cornice lines, and so we're not going to use dental moldings, but, you know, we've got moldings up there, you know, again, that try to put a contemporary tone to what was a historical architectural feature. So, you know, when you look back, you know, you see these buildings, you know, I think we've got a nice scale to them. You know, the balconies are wide, you know, the windows are abundant, and, you know, we're making a conscious effort to, you know, try to reuse the historical materials in a contemporary manner. And so this is just the aerial view, looking west, so we've got, you know, we've got 4 and 5, I'm sorry, 4 and 3, we've got 5, we've got the hotel, and you can see 1 and 2, you know, behind. So that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions?
Are those the two parking spaces, right there?
Yes, they are. Where are they?
Right there.
Yes, they are.
Right there, and then that's the walkway, right behind there, to the public access, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there more public access at the other end of the property?
There is not, and there currently isn't. Although there, well, there will be for, no, I'm sorry, that, because our pedestrian walkway would be for the residents there, but there is a walkway that goes across the new wetlands, which is beyond Building 1, and I believe it crosses over to those streets. It does, I think it connects to the street that's over there where the Mohegan Valley concrete is. So I believe it ends up over there on the other side of Ash Creek and goes down by Grassmere Road and those residences over there. So I believe it connects up on the other end.
Is the concourse, where does that fit into this rendering?
So we didn't graphically, three-dimensionally draw the concourse. The concourse, you know, would fit, you know, kind of in that triangular piece-
Yeah.
-that's at the end of the parking lot. I believe that property line runs right there. From that, there's the overpass-
Yep.
-at the train station, straight off of that, so that concourse building fits right in there.
It would take up parking spaces, or those aren't really-
Those would be existing to remain, and the concourse gets built above it.
Above it, right.
I think it was described that they remain, there's a parking level that's built above that, and then another level that's on the surface of Ash Creek.
Right, and so that the grade level of the concourse would then be equal to the Ash Creek, to the roadway?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'd like to reintroduce Mr. Earl Goven and introduce Mr. George Andrews, a professional engineer at the firm of LaRrow Engineering Associates with offices in Plainville.
George. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I'm George Andrews, LaRrow Engineering. I'm a professional engineer and a licensed environmental professional. We're located in Plainville, Connecticut. What I wanted to go over with you tonight is a little bit of the engineering that we've accomplished. I'm going to summarize the drainage, the utilities, talk a little bit about the environmental review, and then close in soil erosion, sedimentation control, which is, at which time, we'll talk about the phasing and how that'll be integrated with landscaping. So Earl and I'll kind of tag-team on that one. Okay, I'm starting with the existing conditions plan, and I just wanted to call attention to a couple of items. One of the commissioners asked about the wetland area and how that was kind of created. I don't know all the details to that, but you're exactly right, there are three different areas associated with that, and there is a little estuary and component of it. And that system right there was actually designed to provide attenuation, stormwater attenuation, for the full build-out of this site. So that'll be important. We'll be talking a little bit more about how we're dealing with this stormwater as I get further in the presentation, but that whole wetland complex, which I'll refer- But that whole wetland complex, which I'll refer to as the core wetland mitigation area, is a key component to how the stormwater is managed for the site. In addition, there are two other structures that I'd like to call attention to. A little tough to see. My apologies, I'm not coming up with colored slides like the rest, but please bear with me. There's a biofilter right, located right here, and a second one located right here. And we'll be connecting into those to provide additional stormwater treatment. And I'll get into those details in a bit. So, this is the site essentially fully developed and fully graded. And as you can see, we're coming from a high of about elevation 45 up here, down to about elevation 20 along here, to meet the, essentially, the existing grade along these edges. There's three areas I'd like to call attention to on this particular slide because they're a little easier to see. Remember, I talked about the two biofilters, one located here and here. We have three rain gardens right here, right here, and right here. And I'll detail those as we move into the next slide. So, we broke the drainage system up into three separate networks. The first network picks up the hotel and the drive that extends down toward building number one. And this network actually discharges into the first biofilter. The invert that was prepared on that, so that's fully constructed at this point, that biofilter exists. The invert that is associated with that biofilter is what we designed the site to. So, that is what dictated the grades. Someone asked about the grades on the site and how they're going to orient. That basically dictated how we needed to grade this site so that we could grade everything to the back of that property to properly drain. So, that's network number one. And as I say, that one covers the hotel and that northern drive that runs parallel to the railroad tracks. Network number two is what I call site proper. So, it includes pretty much the rest of the site with the exception of building number three and the amenity area. So, it picks up building four, five, one, and two. All of these are connected into the drainage network with the three rain gardens that I showed you earlier. I mentioned earlier that the network number one ties into the biofilter, and that's how we're providing stormwater treatment for network one. Network two, we're relying on these three rain gardens to provide the stormwater treatment. In addition, we have a retention system, a subsurface retention system. So, we're actually reducing the overall discharge from this site in its entirety into the core wetland mitigation area. So, the way the site was originally designed, there were some connections into the biofiltration system. There were also direct connections back to the channel that runs across the back of the property, and there was one direct connection into the wetland mitigation area. And we've actually reduced that peak discharge at the request of the town engineering department just a tad. So, we're coming in a little bit less than the original design. The last network, drainage network that we have, is just building three and the amenity area, and those two are tied into this biofilter. So, with the stormwater system as designed, we're actually able to attenuate, and as I say, reduce the peak discharge from that which was included in the original design. And we have fully treated the water quality volume as required in the DEEP requirements for stormwater management for this project. So, we've met really all of the objectives from both the DEEP perspective and the town's Like to delve now into the utilities. I'll start with where we started on this project. We started with an app.
Before you move on?
Sure.
Can you describe these biofilters, how they function, and give me some details on that?
Yeah. These biofilters right here are both general media-filled, and they've actually already been charged. So, the media is sitting within them, and they have drains at the low point. And the description that I'm giving you is consistent with the rain gardens. The difference is that the rain gardens have been planted with some flora and such to provide beautification as well. But the stormwater actually flows into these structures. It filters through the media, and the media is a variety of different mixes. There's companies out there right now. We made this on-site when we redeveloped this project. I was involved with the original construction and such in the remediation. And the material was actually manufactured on-site, and it included peat, certain amounts of sand, and wood chip products. They're mixed together, and then they have low-level drains in them, and these are all sealed. It's a, as you're aware, the site has contaminated soils underneath, so all of these are sealed, and in fact, under those, they're double-sealed. And the stormwater enters those structures, it filters through to the lower drains, and then it drains in these two particular cases. It drains out through a cascading system into the core wetland mitigation area. So, the treatment is provided with the organic materials that are included in the biofilters as well as the rain gardens. And that provides enhancement. It essentially removes many of the contaminants. It binds with them because of the organic nature of the material. And do they need to be maintained? Absolutely. And they occasionally, at some point, will need to be recharged because you'll saturate that organic material. You'll need to replenish it with fresh organic materials, and that would be part of the stormwater management system.
Do the biofilters then collect the contaminants such that the material then needs to be exchanged?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
How often does that need to happen?
It actually depends on the depth typically, the thickness. These two right here are very deep structures, and they haven't had any stormwater flow other than direct clean stormwater that's fallen on them. But those, I would expect to be.
To date, right, to date, they have only had, right?
Correct.
But once?
Once a site's developed, you're, I would suggest that you would get somewhere between five and 15 years of positive treatment out of those.
Five and 15?
Typically, we're seeing about 10, 12 years on those structures.
So, does someone physically have to go out and monitor and sort of test to see how contaminant, you know, test the filter to see how, whether it has become saturated with contaminants?
It'll typically simultaneously be, its performance will reside as a result of silt, and it's typically silt is the indicator that I've always used on these biofilter systems.
Silt?
When I start seeing, right, the silt particles that collect in them, once the silt is, we're starting to get reduction in infiltration capacity of them, that's typically a sign that the silt has increased in them. They need to be replaced at that particular time, and that's typically the same time that we'll see a falloff in the quality of the stormwater that comes out of them.
So, someone is monitoring that? I mean, I suppose, in lay terms?
Yep.
It sounds like what you say, when they stop working, they need to be changed.
Absolutely.
And when they stop working, that means flooding?
Not necessarily flooding. It would, each one of these has an overflow system such that if there's a significant storm event, we're looking at treating the first inch of stormwater in these. And during significant storm events, where we exceed the one inch of stormwater, they run off through the top of the unit. So, they do have high-level discharges.
They run off through the top of the unit without filtering the water?
Correct. Right.
You remember the last time we got more than an inch of rain?
Oh, yeah.
It was probably yesterday.
Yes, but we all know that the first inch of rain is the component that has the majority of the contaminants in it. Everything has been washed with that first inch of rain, which is why we typically treat the first inch of rain. And when we get more than the first inch, we allow that to bypass.
I see. And that's, so the contaminants are not leaching through, you know, the underground? The contaminants that we're treating are what's being washed away from the surface? And forgive my naive questions if they are.
Yeah. I'd like to answer a little bit.
Sure, just pull that closer, pull that closer to you.
Earl Goven again. What actually happens is there's a reaction between the organics. In fact, they found that the mulch actually removes more of the pollutants than any of the other due to the fact that it's siphoning through, but it does naturally dissipate. So, it doesn't get, it's not as if it gets inundated with pollutants and can't work anymore. It's, as George says, typically, it's the silt that stops the rain garden from working because it no longer allows water to get through it. So, it's really not an overload of pollutants, it's more of an overload of silt and impenetrability by the material that's in it.
Okay.
So, it does filter through, and it does naturally dissipate through its natural process.
Right, okay. And then, when they need to be changed, is that, and I'm just speaking about the contaminants. I mean, is, do there need to be precautions taken so that the contaminants don't sort of get, I don't know?
Dispersed throughout an area where you wouldn't want it?
Yeah.
Exactly. And typically, I would equate the clean-out of those to street sweepings, and it should be managed the same way as street sweepings. And the DEEP has a program specific for that. So, the maintenance of those systems, you'd hire a contractor to come in, they typically would use a VAC truck to remove that material, and then they replenish it with the reverse VAC system. So, they actually blow the material back in, and that material would have to go off. I'm sure wouldn't be, wouldn't go to a hazardous waste facility, but it would go to perhaps Manchester landfill or a facility that could actually receive street sweepings and dispose of them.
So, I guess it begs the question, how much contamination is going to remain on the site after we finish construction?
What kind of contamination?
I don't know.
From, you're talking about cars, or are you talking about contaminated soil?
Contaminated soil.
I have that in my presentation. I was going to do a whole section on that.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I'm, okay. So, transitioning into the general utilities, I wanted to start with where we started this project. We made an application to the Water Pollution Control Authority in town and went in front of them with the full develop, development, the full build-out, including the concourse area and the retail at the point, and did some flow monitoring for them. We went through several sessions with the WPCA and ultimately gained their approval, and that was on July 25, 2018. And the outcome of that is that the project was approved, provided the infiltration and inflow fee be paid in the amount of $1,510,462 and an additional fee that the applicant is contributing toward future improvements to the Water Pollution Control Authority's collection system of $150,000. So, we did gain that approval. And wanted to just identify some of the existing utilities. The water is provided by Aquarian Water, and that's available and was reconstructed in the 2010 reconstruction project. Plenty of capacity available if we, as we have testified all evening. This build-out is considerably smaller than that which was originally proposed. So, there's plenty of capacity for water in the street. Power and communications similarly are both available, and actually, power, they stubbed out to the edge of the road to mitigate the need for asphalt disruption. And Yankee gas is provided in the road as well. The sewer system actually runs down from 1401 King's Highway, comes through the site, and kind of follows the edge of the conservation easement, and then runs over to Canard Street. And I'll show you a detail of how we're connecting into that. With the proposed utilities, we're going to be bringing water in in two locations. We'll be servicing building five and the hotel from this connection. The next connection will be located at the lower entrance, and that will come in and serve building four, three, two, and one in the amenity area. So, water service, as I say, will be provided by both directions, and fire protection and domestic water service will run side by side. Power, we're similarly providing two different connections, one up here through a stub, one down here through a stub, and those run through the site, serving the buildings on this side and on this side. Communications follows with power directly. And gas, we showed the gas in green. We're bringing in two connections for gas as well. This is one of them. And the second one comes in and services these three buildings, four buildings this So, with that said, I wanted to transition into the environmental, unless there's a question.
I thought I heard electric-powered heat pumps.
Yes.
What's gas for?
Gas would be for?
For the generator?
Generator.
Backup generators?
Yes.
Cooking?
Yeah. Cooking? Would it be available for cooking?
Absolutely.
Possibly.
So, the heat in all the residential units is electric?
Yes.
Heat is electric?
Yeah.
I have a question about the sewer. Somewhere in the wetlands permit, they said that they would have to get another wetlands permit because they have to do something else with the sewer line? I don't remember the details.
Yeah. So, the, I've changed slides here. This shows our internal sewer connection right here. So, that's all new, being provided as part of this project. The existing sewer runs down along here and crosses that wetland, core wetland mitigation area. When the original site was redeveloped and remediated, they increased the size of all the pipes on the project, with the exception of the section that runs through that core mitigation area. And I'm going by memory, and this is 2018, I'm going to say that they're 36-inch all the way to here, and then it's a 30-inch that runs across that wetland, core wetland mitigation area. We ran through an analysis and metered and monitored and presented flow projections from this project, and the 30-inch up here wasn't problematic. Where it was problematic is down just to the south of Canard Street, there's another section that never got rebuilt when that portion of sanitary sewer was rebuilt. And that particular section was right about at capacity. So, in talking with the WPCA, there were two areas that they were interested in enhancing, and their perspective was if we're going to do it, we're going to do both areas. So, I believe that their direction is, right now, they're in the process of repairing the lower section south of Canard Street. I believe that project has probably been bid by now, and maybe a contractor may be starting in the spring or so. And then the next portion that they wanted to address was the crossing at that core wetland mitigation area. And that was the incentive where the contribution of an additional $150,000 from the applicant came to help offset some of the costs associated with that improvement.
Do you have to apply for another wetlands permit to do that work?
The, actually, the WPCA would be undertaking, or the town would be undertaking.
You would not be the applicant on that wetlands permit?
Correct.
Although your project depends on approval, obviously, but?
Well, not necessarily of that because we documented that that's actually adequate for our project. But it's clear that if you have 36-inch pipes on one side, 36 on the other, to maintain continuity, it would be prudent to increase the size of that pipe to 36 as well.
Like, a few years ago, this, I think they went to wetlands because they were going to do residential at like 197 units, and now it's like two or three times that. So, that's all been cleared with WPCA and wetlands, like, instead of being like 200 units, it's now like 400 units?
Yes.
That's all been handled in this wetlands permit that you have now? Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Transition into the environmental discussion. So, the site was purchased, originally purchased, in December of 2000, and as part of that purchase, it went through what's called the Transfer Act. So, it went through a filing process with the DEEP. And the DEEP delegated the site to the LEP program, a Licensed Environmental Professional program. So, this site has undergone, just switch to a environmental slide. This site has undergone, in fact? This site has undergone investigation, which has been completed, and remediation planning, which has been completed, reviewed, and approved by the DEP. The remedy that was proposed was to cap the site essentially in its entirety. The capping has been completed in the areas where it needed to be provided, and as you can see, we're showing that with this, this dark feature. The wetland mitigation area was completely remediated, down to clean soils, such that the soils met the residential criteria. So that area did not need any further capping or anything. The rest of the site, in the dark area that I'm showing here, is what's been capped to date. And as you can see, there's some overlap with some of our structures in that cap. So what we'll be doing as part of this project is we will excavate down to where the cap is, and then that cap gets exposed and it gets cut with a sharp edge, and we'd run that cut all the way around these buildings. Now, we're going to be phasing, so I'm talking about the job as a complete job, but please understand, it would be done in phases. So the, let's look at this building as an example. So we would cut that piece of geomembrane out, and this geomembrane is a 40-mil high-density polyethylene membrane. And it comes in rolls or sheets. It's rolled out, they lap one over the other, and then they extrusion weld them. And when they extrusion weld them, they leave a section in the middle that is filled with air, and that's how it's tested. They clamp it on both ends and they test every seam. So that's how it was installed originally, and that's how it will be installed going down the line. And so what we're able to do is, once we cut that surface, that existing surface, we put this foundation in, we actually run the new membrane right up and we batten it to all of the foundation structure. And by batten, we fold that membrane up the side, and we run a piece of stainless steel, and we fasten it into the structure itself.
So you're cutting the membrane to build the foundation on top of the contaminated soil, and then you are affixing the membrane to the side of the foundation to reseal it off?
Exactly. And then the new membrane will be extrusion welded to the old membrane with one of those joints that I spoke of earlier.
Sure. Why aren't we cleaning the soil? Why aren't we remediating the contamination?
The, I'm going by memory, this is back to 2010 or so. If I recall properly, there was an estimated 250,000 cubic yards of impacted material on this site, so it would preclude any kind of future movement of the site without leaving it in place. Because if it were removed, you'd have to replace it, and the cost to remove it, ship it off-site for disposal, and then backfill it, would preclude any interest in development on the site itself. So the, the plan that went forward was consolidating that material into specific areas at a site, and then capping it in place, leaving it in place underneath, putting a geomembrane over it, and then in the landscaped areas, we provide 24 inches of clean soil above the membrane, and 18 inches in the asphalt paved areas or concrete areas. But it would, essentially, it would have precluded future development of the site. It just wouldn't have been financially feasible to do anything with the site.
And is, is that something that the owner is, discloses to potential tenants and buyers of property on the site?
I would leave that up to the owner, but all the information is public information, it's available on both your files, DEP files.
Yeah.
But I would leave that up to the, the sales group that would be marketing this to the owners. The, the, the project will carry what are called land use restrictions, which restricts certain activities on the site as well. Those are posted at Town Hall and maintained, such that if maintenance or any kind of service work is required, they have to get a release to actually be disturbing the geomembrane system, if you will. So that precludes workers from coming into contact with it. Residents obviously wouldn't be able to come in contact with it. There would be restrictions on, on any type of activity that could jeopardize that geomembrane.
But could you just give us some examples of what the kind of restricted activities might be?
Any kind of excavation.
I presume digging, yeah, right?
Yeah.
Like, call before you dig, you don't want to hit the pipe.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, and the, I guess you'd call it the manager of the site, the facilities manager of the site. We actually have a requirement now in the regulations that requires that you post that land use restriction in the facilities manager's office. So it's something that's there all the time onsite, so that it's not forgotten about. And as I say, it's also posted on town records, such that if a building permit is requested or some type of excavation permit is requested, it comes up at that check time, so...
So I, I noticed that part of the area in that dark gray is where the pool is going to go.
Yep.
So how deep is the pool, and relative to the membrane and such?
Yeah. Actually, where the pool is, and there's several other areas, we're able to bring the membrane down, and I, I can explain it a little bit better in, in tree wells. We've got quite a few, I, I mentioned it's about 18 inches below the paved areas, but we've got tree wells, islands, landscaped islands within the parking area.
Need to go down further than 18 inches?
Exactly. So we drop it down in those areas to four feet. And we actually have to drain those areas, which is another reason why the site has to be at such an elevation, why we needed to bring so much fill-in, to bring this site up to elevation, so that we can get those low points to actually drain into the wetland mitigation area and into the existing biofilter systems.
I see part of the... Part of one biofilter looks like it's in the gray area.
Yes.
Does that mean it's not, it's sitting on top of...
...plastic membrane, how is, how is that going to work very well?
Yeah, actually, all of them have geomembrane underneath them.
So it doesn't leach into the, so the drain, the stormwater does not go through the biofilter and go into groundwater, it gets moved in a direction towards the wetlands?
Exactly. There's a piping system in the, in the low end of each one of those biofilters, as there is in the rain gardens as well. And that piping system picks up that water at the bottom of it after it's been filtered, and then allows that to discharge into the wetland mitigation area.
Has this plan, I know an LEP can carry out the DEP rules of remediation, but has this plan been filed with DEP, or do they get involved? Is it all approved, this plan that we're looking at?
Yeah, so what's been, what was submitted to the DEP was, I would say circa 2005 or so, and we submitted a remedial action plan to them. They allow a project like this to be carried out under the purview of a Licensed Environmental Professional. However, since there was such a massive investment on this particular project, the owner at the time felt it would be prudent to get a review and approval of the remedial action plan from the DEP. Further, the DEP to use a geomembrane requires a variance, and so that's a second application process that you have to go through. And this plan with the biofilters was indeed submitted to the DEP under that engineered control variance request and under the remedial action plan, and both of those were reviewed and accepted by the DEP.
So the light gray area, is that, it used to have the contaminated soil, but it was all moved to the other areas?
Yeah, that, that area actually represents the lower portion, where the depressed section of the parcel is. And we remediated that section down to elevation seven or eight, and we left it low, we covered it with crushed stone, so that that could remain, not a nuisance essentially, dust nuisance. And then we put a fence around it, and the fence in circles, essentially to keep kids out from playing in it and such. The crushed stone surface was placed on it to mitigate erosion and to give it some type of cap. We knew we weren't going to plant it. And the anticipation was that that's where the building was going, so that was brought to the bottom grade of where that parking area was. So we didn't install geomembrane in that area, there's no geomembrane in that section now. There will be as part of this project. So we'll bring that grade up to about two feet, plus or minus, depends whether there's a landscaped island there or not. We'll bring that up to grade, and we'll cap that entire surface. So essentially, the whole area would be shaded dark when we're complete with the project.
Why do you need to cap it if it's clean now? Is this clean to what they call residential standards, or...
This area wasn't clean, clean to residential standards.
Was, or wasn't?
Was not.
Okay.
The building was going to go on top of that, so the building would, there's another provision in the remediation standard regulations, and it's called isolation of materials, and a building can isolate without necessarily having a geomembrane under the building.
So if it was one big fat building, like the original plan was, that would have been the cap?
Exactly.
But now it's not, so how, so you have to now put a membrane in?
Now we're going to put a membrane in, right, exactly. So all of those paved areas will be equipped with membrane, and the membrane has to be drained. So stormwater comes in through landscaped areas, infiltrates down to the top of the membrane. It all has to be graded, there's drains within that that pick that, intercepted rainwater up and drains it into our collection system and discharges it out through the treatment system. Further, there's one other feature I just wanted to call attention to. Each one of the buildings, as I mentioned, there's an opportunity for environmental isolation by the use of a building, and we could use that provision here. However, there are contaminants within the groundwater on this site. The state of Connecticut is in flux right now with regard to what's called the volatilization criteria, volatile components within the groundwater that can volatilize and transition into soil vapor and cause what's called vapor intrusion into a building. So all of these buildings are going to be equipped with sub-slab depressurization systems and membrane liners to mitigate that. At this particular point, the concentrations don't reach that level, but they are, DEP is proposing right now, hasn't been adopted yet, much lower levels. So based on an abundance of conservatism, we elected to install those systems in all the buildings, such that if that volatilization criteria comes back down even further than what's proposed, we would be covered with mitigation systems that would alleviate any concern.
Well, can I ask one more question?
Certainly, of course, that's why I'm here.
So the remedial action plan that was approved, you know, years ago, that was based on the original configuration of buildings. Is DEP involved in this configuration of buildings where it's mostly residential?
No, there's no preclusion from residential for this site at all. Once we put the geomembrane in, it completely eliminates the potential for residents to actually come in contact, direct exposure, if you will, with the contaminated media. So there is no restriction, and in the previous applications, we provided such documentation directly from DEP. This particular plan, we don't need to put in front of the DEP. I, as an LEP, am able to adopt the approvals of the original engineered control variance request and the original remedial action plan, and adapt those to fit the final use of the site.
It seems a lot... It just seems to me, not being an engineer, that there's a whole lot more nooks and crannies now than there were if it was one big building, like, more chance for like something to come loose or whatever.
There are a lot more nooks and crannies, and it's not a simple system in comparison to your point, having a larger building footprint. But I will say that installing many, many thousands of yards of this material, inside the building is the most difficult installation that you'll ever run into. Having exterior areas like this where it's wide open, all you're dealing with is some lamp posts and some drainage is much simpler. When you start looking at the internal utilities within the building structures themselves and all the penetrations, we have to boot every penetration where we have a pipe or a conduit that runs up through the geomembrane liner. It gets booted, and as I said, it gets battened to all of the concrete structures. And it's a significant undertaking inside a building as well. So it's, to your point, it's, on its surface, it looks a little bit simpler, but it's very, very complex inside a building.
One more question? I'm, I'm next, thanks. So the gray area, you, years ago, remediated down to six or seven feet, and then put crushed stone on top. Now, that's been like that for many years?
Ten years, yeah.
Ten years. And underneath that crushed stone is still contaminated soil?
Correct.
So over the past 10 years, we've had quite a bit of rain and snow, et cetera, that lands on top of the crushed stone. That rainwater that infiltrates through the crushed stone into the contaminated soil, that water then leaches within the, the ground and discharges presumably right into the, into the ground, taking the contaminants with it into the creek?
Yep. And as I say, Bullard Foundry started this process way back when, and that's...
So did Xide.
That's the way it's been since the 1940s. But I don't mean to minimize that in any way, shape, or form. Let me just explain a little bit further about the contaminants that are, that prevail on this site. There is petroleum hydrocarbons, oils. Not a significant concern, they're spotty throughout the site. The majority of the contamination on this site was casting sand. And casting sand was used to form a mold into which they'd pour the molten, and then they'd break the sand off. And the sand used a binder, and the binder is very similar in all respects to asphalt by cement. So it's similar to your roads and drives and such, but it's a contaminant. It's semi-volatile organic compounds which make up the majority of the contaminants associated with that binder, as it does with asphalt. So it's similar to having a bunch of ground asphalt on the site.
Okay.
And that material is, is very hesitant to separate from itself. So rainwater, we don't get a lot of leaching from those materials. But as I said, there are some other materials on the site, much de minimis, if you will.
Presumably, the nature of that contamination, as you've just described it, is one of the primary reasons why DEP was amenable to a cap and this, you know, all that kind of right?
Capping.
All right.
And we're looking forward to finishing the capping on the project and getting that behind us.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Francis?
You said, "deep approve the rap in 2005," and what, what did you say after that for this project?
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Yeah. "Deep approve the rap in 2005." And then you said there was something lately for this, that maybe you administered?
Oh, yes, as an LEP, so the, when the program was released to the LEP program, what that does is it takes, with the exception of that variance that I mentioned, the engineered control variance request, with the exception of that, it takes it out of the DEP's hands, puts it in the LEP's hands, then the LEP runs through the remediation process, files the land use restrictions that I spoke of, and then prepares a confirmation report at the end, submits that report along with documentation of the remedy to the DEP, and then they make a decision as to whether they audit that LEP or ride upon that LEP's opinion.
Okay.
So it's a lengthy process, and monitoring on this site would go on in perpetuity. There will be monitoring required because it has that engineered control.
Okay. And then one other question. Did someone say before, "I have permeable pavement?"
Yes.
Throughout the site? That's all permeable?
Yes. Didn't you say that?
We have some...
Pervious pavement?
It's not throughout the site.
Yeah, no. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's not all located.
Yeah.
And what percentage would you say?
I'm, I said, "we use some permeable pavements at some of the," Earl Govan again, "permeable pavements at some of the entrances where we have the, the rain gardens."
The entrances, okay.
Good. Any other questions?
The rain garden, like the filtration things?
The rain gardens, like the filtration things, will be above the membrane?
Correct, and they'll be underlined.
Okay.
Yep, so they'll have a liner under them, and then a final geomembrane underneath that. So we double-lined, just like the biofilters over here, we're double-lining those as well, just as a precaution.
When this thing was originally approved with the remedial action plan, I was, back then, they probably thought they were going to build that building pretty quick, like not wait 10 or 12 years. Is that, that's not a violation or anything like that? They didn't have to do it? They could have just, it just sat there all these years, the way...
It's a great question. And let me go back to the date, 12/2000 is when the... 12, 2000 is when the transfer took place. Currently, if you run through a transfer, the DEEP requires that you investigate the site within a certain confined timeframe and remediate the site within a certain timeframe. And they wouldn't allow, you know, a project like this to continue unfinished, if you will. And I don't recall the specifics on that, but I believe the investigation has to be done in two or three years and remediation within about five years. Don't quote me on that, but that's ballpark. And that's current. Those are regulations that were adopted well after this one, so.
So that remediation wasn't done because it wasn't capped?
In this area, correct.
Okay.
There remediation's unfinished in that area.
Okay. And the pressure chambers or whatever the things are that keep the compounds out of the buildings?
Yeah.
Will that be operated? I assume it requires energy. Will that have like generator in case there's a power outage or anything like that?
Actually, the way we work those is we install that system, the sub-slab depressurization system, underneath the geomembrane. So we put crust stone, a layer of crust stone with pipes in it. We turn the pipes up through where the floor slab is going to be. And we run the geomembrane over that, boot all of the connections and penetrations, battening it to the edges, and then they pour the slab over the top of that. So now you have two pipes that come through the surface of that. We run those two pipes right up through the roof through a chase, and we let that naturally ventilate. And so it's called a passive ventilation system.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Yep. Commissioner Brahman.
I noted that in the Wetlands Agency approval decision from May 2019, they talked about the need to better maintain the conservation easement area. Could you or another member of the team speak to that?
I'm not in a position. Do you have anything on that, Bill?
Bill Fitzpatrick, for the record. Very often, there can be a disagreement between the conservation staff and the developer over the level of quote-unquote "maintenance" of that area. Certainly, our focus is to get this approved, and we will then have to have extensive conversations with the conservation staff to make sure that the level of maintenance is in accordance with their expectations.
Do you think that that's adequately addressed in their conditions to approval?
I think so. I think there's an earlier long-term management plan that addresses some of Georgia's concerns over the maintenance. And I wrote myself a note to find that long-term management plan from the original conservation approval, because there was one that, substantial one that preceded this approval.
While you're up here, Attorney Fitzpatrick, would you have to come back to us for full site, excuse me, full special permit approval for anything having to do with the concourse or the point?
Yes. Because we're only asking for conceptual approval.
What's the effect of the conceptual approval?
It gives us an idea that the commission is amenable to going forward with X kind of use and X kind of building on those sites.
Is the commission bound by the concept?
I suppose the commission can say that what we came in with a special permit was not in accordance with their concept. So I think the commission certainly has some leeway. My intent is to find out if the commission has a significant problem with either of those uses.
Thank you.
Right. I'll speak to that. I think the answer is yes, we have discretion. We've given some guidance here tonight about what we think looks appropriate, what we think doesn't, streetscape, some crosswalks, the concourse, you know, et cetera. So, you know, to the extent that we've, you know, previewed the concept and we appreciate the efforts, I think that when they come back with a special permit application, you know, yeah, we want to see it, but still has to comply and still have to go through all the process. Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I had one final component. I'll be brief. I know it's getting late. We just wanted to talk a little bit about the soil erosion sedimentation control for the site. So as I say, I will be brief. The applicant will be required to register under a general permit for stormwater and dewatering wastewater discharges from construction activities. And what that will require is weekly inspections, after-storm inspections, third-party inspections, and stormwater monitoring throughout the construction period. We phased the soil erosion sedimentation control plan, which is in your documents. We phased that very specifically with Earl's landscape architecture. So I thought we could, at this point, just go through what that's going to look like rather than getting into some of the technical details associated with the soil erosion process, protection process.
So what we've got here is some, six, I believe, exhibits indicating what is going to be built and at what time period. Obviously, timing is as the market allows, but first building is building number three, the amenity building and the parking associated with that. There are some other items too, such as the perimeter walk, which will walk around the entire site. That would be installed in the phase one. The dog walk, which we didn't talk about earlier, but there's a small dog walk up in the northeast, northwest corner. That'll be built as well. And then the areas surrounding that would be cordoned off with some evergreen, evergreen trees so that you wouldn't be looking into the hole anymore off of Ash Creek. The areas around the residences would be protected or buffered from the storage areas or the additional construction going on here. And the areas around building three would be completed in full.
I have a question. So I noticed you're planting pine trees or evergreens of some sort. I mean, they take a while to mature. How long are we talking about?
Well, those are just there temporarily.
How big are they?
They would be seven, eight foot. They're really just meant to provide a buffer between the two. They're not really meant to totally block it off, but just to provide a clean edge, so to speak, so that there's a work area and then there's an inhabitable area.
Do you have a timeframe?
I think I'd like to leave that for Bill and the owner to kind of discuss that and how that, but we'll kind of go through the steps. And the steps kind of are dependent upon market. There's, if, once the first building's built and it's, looks to be fully leased, I think that we'll go to phase one and 1A and then two. 1A is the hotel. So if we click on that.
So to that point, the hotel is not anticipated to be built until building three is built and leased?
It's 1A. No, that's not true.
Okay.
That's not what I meant. What I meant was that, other than the hotel.
Other, okay.
The residential buildings would go as they're, as the leasing goes.
Okay.
In terms of timing.
Is the, is the hotel scheduled to be constructed in combination with the first building number three?
Yes.
Thank you.
And if you hit the button, phase 1A?
If I may just explain how the environmental is going to be handled in this phasing process. So as you can see, this portion of the site would be built out, this portion wouldn't be. And what we're planning on doing in this area is bringing that up a minimum of four feet of clean fill over the contaminated media that's down in the lower sections. And Earl has better grades and such that can be reviewed. But we're providing four feet of clean fill over the top of that, which is DEEP's minimum standard for residential inaccessible soil. So as the process goes on, the geomembrane would be extended from phase one into the other phases. That geomembrane would be installed, but in the interim, there would be a soil cap over that of four feet for protection of human direct exposure.
And the blue, the blue little box you see there, that's the storm drainage system that would be installed during phase one, the major subsurface system that needs to be installed for the project.
So our comments earlier about pedestrian access, I mean, the same thing applies here. I mean, the shortcut way is not a walkway around.
No, but we also can't allow a shortcut through the site, which is a construction zone.
No, but I mean, you could down the driveway and cross into the parking lot.
Yes, and they, they could go this way, right through the train station. So this, this way would still be accessible.
Yeah, across the ass creek then?
That's the existing walk. So there is a way to get, not going all the way around this way, you could actually walk out this way, go across and walk through the parking lot.
Right, but you're walking through a parking lot? Okay. A drive alternative, all right.
Just, did you give any consideration to building, building five first?
It's not an ideal location for the other constructed, you know, we tried to work around one, we want to get the amenity building built.
Well, I guess, yeah, because then you can't get to the back. Or building, building one first. It's named building one.
The reason being is we'd like to get some of the common space built first. So the amenity area, the workout rooms, the gym would all be built under phase one so that it's, at least it's there for the initial, the initial tenants. Phase 1A is, is the, is the hotel and the drive down to the back of the hotel and the, and the service area. The rest of the site would remain the same, blocked off by evergreens with the darker gray there and the green would be the area that would be laydown space and staging. Phase two is building two. Again, with the entrance plaza, the rain garden at the entrance to building two, the completion of the amenity spaces adjacent to the amenity deck and parking that's associated with building two, and then connecting to the access road coming down from the main access, the driveway coming by the hotel.
As you do each phase, you're going to do the plastic membrane that goes under it separately? Okay.
Phase three is building four. Again, they're all, they all have similar, you know, attributes to them. Their landscaping would be completed around them, the walkways would be completed that weren't previously completed. The temporary screening gets smaller and smaller as we develop more of the site. Phase four is building one. And phase five is building five. And the service building. That's generally the phasing of how it would, would get put together.
Sorry, did you say the service building?
There's a small service building, there's a maintenance building that would be associated. And that may end up going in at one of the other phases, depending on how they need that for, for function. But it's meant to house, you know, maintenance vehicle, maintenance shop, plumbing shop, you know, electrical shop, whatever they might need to repair some of the facilities.
Well, while you're still there, one more question about the membrane. The membrane goes into Ash Creek, the river. I'm not talking about Ash Creek, the road. It goes underneath for a way. Is there any concern with like storms, tides, you know, rising sea levels, that that's going to be lifted up and sort of mess everything up?
That's a great question. The way that was actually designed, first one I've ever seen designed this way, the lower section where it goes into the, down to where the high tide would meet the upland portion, it was actually shuttered in that area. So if you picture how a shutter is formed, that's the way it was established. So it's got that lowest level. It's not quite flat, not quite horizontal, but then the next layer comes, and it was built that way such that rain falling directly down on that would cascade down and into the water. But during a significant flood event, you would alleviate a situation of creating an air pocket underneath that and having that come up through the ground, which is a condition that has happened on other sites.
It's not just water going down, it's water coming up from the tides and floods. Okay.
Exactly. Yeah.
Thanks.
Your pet.
Commissioner Francis.
Read something in the report about a 25-year storm. Does this withstand a 25-year flood? I was wondering why it isn't the 100-year flood?
For the design of the stormwater system?
I thought that's where I read it.
Yeah, I believe that was probably with regard to the design of the stormwater system. So the way we design those is we pick a design storm that's dictated by whatever authority has requirements for that. And we design, for example, for a 25-year storm event, to be able to handle all of that within the pipes and piping system. But if we have a 100-year storm event, we're able to convey stormwater without flooding the buildings. So we may have puddles in the parking lot where we have stormwater drainage grates and such at the low points. We may have water that comes up to the surface of the grate and it may even create a puddle within the parking area. But typically, that's typical of our designs, and we'll typically design for that standard storm that's required by the regulatory entity. And then up to 100-year, we, we will acknowledge that there may be puddles in the parking lot, but the rest of the design, the finished floor elevations and such have been selected such that we're not going to backwater into the buildings.
It's not. Okay, that's what I meant, into the buildings, cellar, garages. It doesn't. Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, George. Thank you, Earl. Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Galante of Frederick B. Clark Associates. Mike?
I'm sure you're happy to see me. Mike Galante, Frederick Clark Associates. And let me just set this up. I don't want to press these buttons without ruining it. That one, oh, okay. Maybe before I get started in the summary of the traffic report, which is that black binder in front of the chairman, I was going to summarize the report in 12 slides and then obviously talk about that in some detail. But maybe we should touch on, because of the time, maybe touch on the Ash Creek Boulevard crossing, pedestrian crossing, which certainly is a concern and we want to talk about there for at least a few minutes. There was a lot of discussion internal in our office about crossing Ash Creek from the residential hotel side to the train station side, the concourse building and so on. The reason why we don't have a crosswalk there is because there's no traffic signal control. In the previous plan from 2006, there was a traffic signal there. And in 2006, and I get into this with the traffic study and the comparison to the previous study and the volumes, the volumes from the previous study, which is the office building, the hotel and so on, had much more traffic volume. That brought in, met criteria. I didn't work on the, I didn't work on the analysis of Ash Creek with this development. We actually, Clark Associates, actually worked for the town with all the off-site road improvements, which was 13 intersections. And although those improvements are actually in place today, and we'll touch on that. So the specifics of Ash Creek and the crossings and the traffic signal, I can't speak to, except as Steve Sapollo from my office who worked on it, sitting behind me, the volume today versus the volume in 2006 with the much bigger traffic generator warranted a traffic signal. So we don't have a traffic signal at our hotel residential driveway opposite the concourse. Therefore, we are not recommending crosswalk. Now, we have the same concern that you have. We want to cross, someone wants to cross the street. And if it doesn't meet warrants, we're not supposed to recommend a traffic signal. So I would say that we'd have to work with the town and eventually the state to have some type of traffic control at the residential, building five intersection, if you will. And I think we kind of have to leave that open for the moment and talk about that a little bit more. But just, there are reasons why we don't have a crosswalk at the moment.
Thank you for that. So I think that there are different kinds of pedestrian controls.
Yes, there are.
And traffic controls.
Yep. And there are mechanisms today that weren't in existence in 2006.
Yeah, right. And it's not necessarily a stoplight with a crosswalk, you know, and a pedestrian button.
Correct.
You know, if the traffic flows are not enough for that kind of control mechanism, maybe it's a raised section or, you know, where you see frequently today, a crosswalk where a pedestrian can control the cycle. Or even simply, you know, cars need to stop for pedestrians.
I'll give you an example, if you're familiar with downtown.
It's kind of counterintuitive to me that the traffic flows are so low that we can't allow pedestrians to cross. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
We need more cars.
That's a first. That's a first.
More cars in order to make it safe for pedestrians to cross.
I've been waiting for this all my career.
You know, I think you're the reason why we have so many parking lots. But, I mean, it just, it doesn't make any sense.
No, just real quick, from the traffic perspective and traffic signals, we look at minimum traffic volumes on the driveways as opposed to the main street, which is Ash Creek. The driveways today in this plan don't have the volume to dictate the need or what we call warrants for a traffic signal. There are warrant analyses and warrant criteria for crosswalks.
Yeah.
And we have to look at that. If, what I was going to reference, if you're familiar with Washington Boulevard in Stanford.
Yeah.
Near City Hall.
I know very well.
There are three of them now.
Of course.
Those are controlled by pedestrians.
Exactly. That's, and when I was, when I was making that comment, it's downtown Stanford is exactly what I was thinking.
Yep.
And I've even seen in other places where there's a bit, bit of a raise, you know? So even when the pedestrian doesn't activate it, it still calms traffic a little bit.
Yes.
You know? So, how great would that be right here?
Yeah.
I have a couple, I mean, that particular stretch, having used the station a lot, if somebody's racing for a train or they're not going through there at 30 miles an hour, they're going through at 35 or 40 and not planning on stopping for anything.
They just be, by the way, is 33, just so you know. We just happen to have.
And then the second thing is, we happen to have a tunnel.
Yeah. But keep in mind, and I know you want the tunnel, but keep in mind the location of a crosswalk or a traffic signal on that curve of Ash Creek and downgrade it. So there are other issues that have to, have to be addressed. It's not a simple straight section of road to put a raised crosswalk, for example. So there are other concerns that we have to pay attention to. Now, that being said, and do you want me to go through a presentation of, as quick as I can? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, look, as everyone in this room knows, we have a curfew at 11:00 and the applicant is in control of its presentation. I don't know how many members of the public here wish to be heard tonight. I don't know how much more you have left in your presentation. We do have your traffic, you know, report. I leave it to you to determine how you, you know, how you'd like to proceed.
I can do a quick one, but with no questions.
I have very little more, Mr. Chairman, but I'd like to see if Mr. Galante can get through his presentation.
Sure, of course.
I have one more thing to submit and then that would be it.
Okay. I'm a New Yorker, I can speak quick. Just if you don't mind turning around.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have a hard copy of this, but I'm just, I'm going to try to summarize a very detailed traffic report that's quite large in maybe 10 minutes. Just, just going to run through the first chart. Obviously, these are the steps in the traffic study, road inventory, traffic data collection, accident analysis, other developments, site traffic generation, distribution assignment. We project, in the traffic study, we project to 2024. The state lets us do a five-year program as far as looking out into the future and we can receive approval for a project within a five-year period. After that, we have to do it in different steps. Last one, of course, is recommendations, recommended improvements. And I might start with that one. As I mentioned before, the recommended improvements are already in place at those 13 intersections, but that was actually provided by the town many years ago for the train station and that development at that time, which was a much larger development. This, very difficult to see, but this is the study area, the red dots that are kind of blurry, those are the intersections, about 14 of them that we included in the study. It's actually the same 14 intersections included in the original study and probably all of those locations had some type of road improvement, traffic control improvement, lane additions and so on to accommodate the bigger developments. So as you go through this traffic study and the analyses, I can tell you the results, the intersections work quite well because of the improvements provided many years ago. I'll skip this one, it's just an inventory of lane arrangements, traffic control and so on. The actual traffic counting program included weekday mornings, weekday afternoons, Saturday midday, it's 14 intersections when you include the driveways to the site itself. The time period, the peak hours, seven to eight, five to six, 11:15 to 12:15, very standard as far as the typical commuter peak hours during the week and the Saturday midday that you would find really on the post road in the Fairfield Center, fairly standard. Those are the highest volumes recorded at a count that were over a longer period of time. We use those volumes as the highest volumes to do the analysis, so it's a baseline condition. We took these volumes, and this is a graph, I know you can't see the numbers, but it shows the peak hour. Again, we took these volumes by intersections and we've done many counts over the years. And you might say, why is it 2017? Those are actually higher volumes, if I remember correctly, from 2018 and more recent counts that we collected. And we tried to be consistent with the other developments we've done around the site itself on King's Highway, Commerce Drive, and more recently, the movie theaters over in Bridgeport, which we did. I'm happy to say we received Oster approval today. So it's a big day in my office. Next step was to estimate site traffic for this development. And this is the table in the report, but I've taken out the middle columns for pass-by credit and transit credits and so on. Obviously located by a train station, we take a credit for someone that lives in a residential unit that takes the train to Stanford or New York City or New Haven in the other direction. So bottom line, if I can point, these are really the, the peak volumes, if you will, that are added to the roadway system, roughly 200 to 300 trips. These are the higher volumes before you apply the credits. These are the volumes that are actually used in the analysis except at driveways where you take credit for someone pulling in to the retail, for example, that might be already driving on Ash Creek or Commerce Drive and so on.
Question for you here, sorry. So with 350 some odd units, we're having 300 vehicle trip ends.
Yes.
And taking credit for transit?
Yes.
Why aren't more of these people walking to the train station?
State of Connecticut permits us to use 20% credit for transit. You and I know, and by the way, in downtown Stanford, we still use the same 20%. Where in that case, I hate to reference Stanford, but we were actually told by the city years ago, you can use 45% because you're across the street from the train station. State said, sorry, you need to use 20%. So we use 20% wherever we are unless you're really far from a train station. So that's where that credit maximum comes from.
Sorry, you said unless what?
So basically.
Your, the state only lets us use 20%. We're at a train station, you, hopefully would have more people taking the train, that's why to live here possibly in the future. We're not allowed to take a credit higher. So we're, these numbers are conservative, to be honest. I know in other states, and I'm thinking in New York State, we're allowed to use 50% at a train station and that's what we've used. This is just a comparison, only a comparison between the original approval. It says STC, Oster was called STC, State Traffic Commission back before 2012. That is the level of traffic that the approval was based on. 1,400 trips, both AM and PM. In this development, traffic wise, 300 trips and 400 trips, a difference of 1,100 trips and roughly, roughly 1,000 trips during the afternoon peak. So the road improvements that are in place for lots of years that have been improved by, well, you know, home, what's the development by Home Depot, the food store?
Whole Foods.
Whole Foods, sorry, thank you. That client, that applicant was our client, they paid for those road improvements even though the town was obligated to do that. The town did the other improvements in many other places. So those road improvements were based on the higher 1,400 trips. My only point of this reference is to show such a difference in the reduction in traffic from the original development versus this development. So that's, and that's not in the, in the report, it's simply in this graphic for tonight's presentation. Again, we did distribution of site traffic for each lane use on the property, residential, hotel, office and retail. So there are different patterns for each different type of lane use. They all take the appropriate credits, who might take, who may take the train and so on. And that's, that is in the report itself, is one of the graphics of many. The next chart is really the total site traffic, it's based on the volumes we referenced in two tables previous to this. And I'm going fast, but it's highlighted in the report as far as the traffic at each intersection by turn and movement. And this was added to what we call a 2024 no-bill condition. And for us to get to a no-bill condition in 2024, we did a couple of things. We added a 0.6% growth rate per year based on conduct. That's what traffic is growing at without any added development. We added traffic in for the developments that you see on Commerce and King. We added traffic related to some vacant office space nearby and we added traffic for the lofts at Fairfield, which was just approved at the theaters site on the Bridgeport side near Brewster, Brewster Street. That's included in this model. This chart is an abbreviation of the full chart that I typically show you and no one can really see it. This just gives you the results of the analyses for each of the intersections for the AM and PM and Saturday peak hours. And what it shows is essentially all of the intersections with the current roadway conditions and current traffic signal operations operate at acceptable levels of service. The only one that has level service E and F is the Rhode Island street or avenue intersection opposite the constant, I always get it backwards, the Bigelow driveway. Com, Com, Com's driveway, which is really the access drive to the, the drop off to the train station for the New York bound trains. That is a stop sign control. It will, it operates with delays today, it'll operate with delays tomorrow with this development in place. All of the other locations operate at acceptable levels of service. If you see some that show a change in level of service, it's typically an A to B or B to a C, that is acceptable, levels of service D or better are acceptable in the eyes of the town, I guess unofficially, and certainly the state of Connecticut. This document will go to the state, it's not submitted yet, but we have to go through what's called a, at least an administrative decision review process. And the reason why it's not a full, this site has a certificate already. We're amending that certificate and it's an administrative decision process because we're not proposing any physical mitigation on any roads, especially not, no state highways. So that's a quick summary of a very detailed report that we spent probably a year and a half on.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Galante?
I do.
Yes, sir.
On page five of your report, you recommend, you recommend some measures to mitigate traffic impacts. Could you just indicate, I guess, for instance, you say it is recommended that minor fine tuning.
Oh, traffic signals, yes.
Of the splits, of the signalized intersection, Black Rock Turnpike and Commerce Drive be implemented to mitigate the change in level of service from D to E. Could you, and then there's a follow-up sentence. Could you talk about why that's necessary and who should be implementing that?
That is a state-controlled intersection. We will ask them permission to modify the timing of that traffic signal. And when we say fine-tuning, let's say there's a, a green phase that's 25 seconds. We need it to be at 28 seconds to make it work better, meaning we give it more green time. That's the change. That's a fine-tuning of the traffic signal.
Okay. And thank you. And when you refer to left turn pockets being implemented, are those internal to the property?
If you turn around, there's, that graphic is in the report itself, providing left turn pockets and re-striping is along Ash Creek Boulevard in front of the site driveways themselves. The concourse side is, if you will, on the top side of that map shows driveways. Those are the approved driveways from years ago. The driveways on the residential hotel retail side, which is the outside of the curve, are slightly different. There's alignment changes to maximize site distance. That's where we talked about re-striping within the existing pavement to provide left turn lanes. If you go back in time to the STC approval from years ago, it was a full lane road with different types of re-striping within the road itself.
Last question. You note that the 85 percentile speed eastbound on Ash Creek Boulevard is 33 miles per hour. As somebody who's sped to catch a train before, what, if any, traffic calming measures could be taken on Ash Creek Boulevard to make it safer for people who are going to be using and living in this proposed development?
I know everyone, we've talked about raised crosswalks tonight. I cringe a little bit when you recommend that type of improvement on this type of road because I'm concerned with the speed and someone hitting it at a higher speed. So that being said, if we were to do a raised crosswalk of some type, which certainly addresses a pedestrian crossing, there's different types of warning signs that light up that are very effective. I was, you know, the one by uncle by the high school where the speed comes on, that slows people down. That's a simple example, but that type of mechanism is very, very helpful. And we would probably have some other ideas, but I think we would all agree some type of traffic calming is appropriate for this, this type of road and what's happening. Today, there's nothing there. When you have development, the speeds are probably going to go down because of the development. But regardless of that, we need to look at traffic calming measures. And that's something we would work with the town. That's not something the state would approve or disapprove of. It's really, it's between the town and the applicant.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy?
Yes, Mr. Galante?
Yes.
It just seems, I mean, the title of the, the project is the crossing.
I didn't pick the name.
Yeah. And I think we can all agree that a goat path develops sort of at the course of least resistance and not necessarily where you plan on people or animals crossing. And there's little doubt in my mind, wouldn't you agree, that it's likely that a lot of people are going to be going from that building five open area crossing to the parking lot to get to the station?
Yeah, I would agree with that, sure.
I mean, it's just going to happen.
Yeah.
So wouldn't it be appropriate to have some sort of traffic, you know, calming device there, a crosswalk? I mean, I hate to put a crosswalk there and people relying on it and people blowing through it.
It has to be a protective crosswalk.
But something needs to be done because, would you agree the reality is you're going to have people crossing there?
Yes, yes. Unless you put up fences along both sides of the road, which is not realistic either. And we've done that in places and it depends where it is. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes?
Question about parking?
Can you just comment number of spaces per unit and the number of spaces per bedroom? I think there's one to one per bedroom, but I'm not sure.
I'm going to let Mr. Patrick respond to that.
I'm trying to figure it out.
Was the lesser of one per bedroom and one and a quarter per unit.
Okay, so there's one per bedroom. Thanks.
Am I finished?
One last question. You mentioned that there's recommended site distance of 413 feet at your 33 miles per hour speed and that the measured site distance is 413 plus feet. Is there a need to increase the site distance to provide a buffer?
What do you mean by buffer?
Is there, how much site distance is there currently and how much would be required at the speeds that you've measured?
To give you an example, to provide the site distance we refer to for the driveways on the outside, the residential hotel side of the street, if you will. If you, if you must be familiar, there's a retaining wall on the, on the commuter parking lot side of the road. The top of that retaining wall, which is above the road, will be removed. So we're increasing the site distance to provide the site distance I need for the driveways across the road. Okay? And the distance we have in the tables, based on the 33 miles per hour, which is what's called the 85 percentile, that's what we have to provide, the speed, the distance for that speed. Okay?
Mr. Francis?
Quite a few level Ds here and a couple of level Es.
There are Ds in, on particular movements within the intersection. The E and the F that you're referring to is at the intersection I referred to, which is the drop off road to the train station, the, the New York bound train station platform. That's controlled with a stop sign. The only way you mitigate that is by putting a traffic signal in and that would be right next to the Ash Creek intersection, which is just north of that. Which is signalized. That's creating gaps, actually, but that don't really show up in the model. Okay? But that's the only one, actually.
Miskul advance in traffic.
But I mentioned it. I talked about it. I didn't forget it because I knew you would find it.
Every project you mention.
I did mention that one. That was the one that is, the one that's below the standard level, so that's, that's acceptable. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Galante.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to hand in a booklet that my client prepared and then we're done.
At 11 o'clock, you're, you're.
I'm not asking, I want to do it now so you don't continue it from the next turn.
You're just filing it? What is it?
It's some prose and it's a tax analysis. It's a school children analysis. It's nothing new and unusual.
Okay.
And I'll speak to it next time. And I would hope that it'd be two weeks, if possible. Thank you very much.
All right. So you're not going to conclude?
I'm not going to conclude. I don't think it makes sense. I'd like to try to address some of your concerns, see if I can incorporate that into my conclusion.
Fair enough, and you're, you're entitled to do so. So I will hold the public hearing open. So I will hold the public hearing open on this item. The applicant is still in their initial presentation, so when we resume, I don't know that it's going to be in two weeks, but when we resume, the applicant will continue their presentation. Following that, we'll have a public hearing. You'll be entitled to a rebuttal and then we will close the public hearing on this item. With that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.